Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to board members, town staff, those of you who are watching on the Zoom, those of you who are watching at home on TV or on social media YouTube or Facebook. My name is Nico Papakostindis. I'm the Chair of the Select Board in Exeter. And once again, I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91A:2, Roman numeral 3B. And as such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. The Select Board continues to welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though the meeting is being conducted in a unique manner, under these unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum will apply. We appreciate your understanding and your patience, as well as your cooperation. All votes tonight will be taken during the meeting via roll call vote. And at this time, I'd like to introduce members of the Select Board, and when I do, if you would just indicate whether you're in the room alone or not, and if you are not, who's with you in the room? I'll start with our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan.
Good evening, everybody. I am here alone in this room.
Selectman Brown.
Hello, I am here alone.
Select Woman Gilman.
Yes, thank you. I am here and I am alone.
Okay. Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Currently alone, but that may change within the hour. I'll update you.
Thank you. And Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Present and accounted for in the office. I am alone.
Okay. I too am alone in the room. Our first order of business tonight, before we get into our regular meeting, is we have two board interviews for the Police Stakeholders Committee that we are putting together currently. We actually had three potential applications. One has withdrawn, so we're going to jump into the second application, which is Mr. Timothy Kerber. And I see that you're with us tonight, Timothy. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So we've had an opportunity to read your application. I'd like to give you a couple of minutes to just tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest in serving this committee, and certainly answer any questions that you may have. And then I'll give members of the Board an opportunity to ask you questions. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me virtually, or otherwise. So my name is Tim Kerber, and I've lived in Exeter for 19 years. I live right off Newfields Road. And I'm here with my wife Kathleen, and we have two teenage children, both of them, one's in Exeter High School, the other one's enrolled in CMS. So I have a home business, Real Results Media. My wife also works for another locally owned business from home, so both of us work from home all the time. Up until about three years ago, I had a software company that I took a buyout offer in, so that was a transition for the past 10 years. Prior to that, back in 2007, I retired for the software opportunity from the Hampton Police Department. And I was a sergeant there for 14 years, and some police experience in another town prior to that. In Exeter, the, you know, the town for us, my wife and our family is, you know, just an incredible opportunity for us. And we plan to be here for as long as I, you know, foresee. My wife is very involved, as am I, in different functions in the town. She's the chairperson for the Boy Scout Troop 323, and I also do a lot of volunteer work for the troop. I'm in charge of the annual food drive for St. Vincent de Paul, things like that. My son is going to be an Eagle Scout in probably next two or three months. He's actually doing an app, a phone app for the town of Exeter with the help of Barbara M. Kunis and the Exeter Historical Society. He's basically going to do a walking virtual tour all around. As you walk around, it will tell you about whatever building you happen to be looking at or whatever area. Pretty involved. It's pretty exciting, too. You know, very much a history buff, and so is all of us, actually. So really tied in nicely for that. As far as, you know, the background of, I guess, why my experience of, why I was interested in potentially getting on this committee. For one thing, besides the police work, and to put it out there, too, I have absolutely no involvement in any police department whatsoever for the past 13 years. I retired, and that's it. I don't work anywhere else for anybody, for a, you know, situation such as that. But I do have, obviously, a lot of experience on that end. I was the shift supervisor for the 3 o'clock to 11 o'clock at night shift for Hampton, and obviously at Hampton Beach during the summertime. I was in charge of a lot of the training as a training supervisor, so I would train the trainers, basically. You know, things like, I was on the horses for six years, on the SWAT to the CERT team, Seco's Emergency Response Team for six years. So a lot of training having to do with use of force, de-escalation of situations, you know, and a lot of things that go along with just the whole kind of backend mechanics of a police department in my role there. I have always been a big proponent of cultural, between travel and languages, is a big thing of mind. I was born in Germany. I've lived in five countries. I speak a few different languages. So to have as much understanding of the growing, you know, diversity of the environment that we're in and the direction that things are going, and make things as best as possible, is a huge, you know, desire of mine, and also for my kids. They both speak Spanish, and my daughter and I are taking Japanese together, things like that. So we're very, very, you know, very much into learning as much as cultures. As a, in my twenties, I traveled through 16 countries with an educational program. I stayed with 88 host families through all those countries. So I enjoy the whole experience of trying to learn and get to know people one-on-one as best I can, and knowing what it's like to be, you know, in a situation where I don't really know what's going on, but trying to express myself. So I don't know if you had, you know, specific questions for me in general, but as far as the committee's concerned, I would love to be able to, if I could provide any insight or any background at all from my past experience, but also just in general of being a business owner in town here, and, you know, a father of two teenage kids as well, and trying to make this community the best thing that we can have happen for all of us.
Great. Thank you very much for that introduction. I'm going to start with, I'll put both of them on the spot, but Select Woman Cowan and Selectman Brown are going to be the two Select Board representatives to this committee. So I'll throw it out to the two of them first, if they have, if they have any questions. Select Woman Cowan.
Sure. So, hi, Timothy. It's really nice to see you. Thank you so much for all that you've done in town. The app that your son is building sounds fascinating, and Barbara is a town treasure, and I'm-
She is awesome, yeah.
I'm glad he has the opportunity to work with her. So, thank you for your application. I have a couple of questions that were sent over by the chief that I think are important. Some of them you've answered very well. So one of the questions that I'll just open with is, what specifically do you think the police officers are doing well? And where do you see places for improvement?
Well, I, I'll be honest, I'm not intimately familiar with Exeter police specifically. But in general, some of the things I do see them do well, you know, I usually go to all the various functions downtown along Swayze Parkway between Independence Day and stuff like that, and I do see their officers walking around and trying to, you know, basically have some interaction there, which is fantastic. I don't know the extent of that, which obviously, you know, I'm sure that's something that would be delved into as they get underway. And looking at this report that was done just a few months ago, I'm sure that was part of it as well, as far as the community policing and the things. I think the downtown area that we have is a real treasure as far as the town, the river, that whole situation there, it's really what makes Exeter happen. And I don't know yet, but I would find out, obviously, what their extent of community policing is down there, you know, and what other. I know they do have their, like, a monthly, I don't know if they, they call something, you know, Meet a Cop or something like that, but anything like that, the interaction directly is always well received on both ends of things. I mean, with the, when I was with the, on the mounted patrol in Hampton, obviously, they were magnets for people. You know, you're at the beach, you'd have a crowd of 30 people there, and people that would never normally come up and maybe talk to a police officer finally had the opportunity to do so. And some of those were the best moments, you know. We had a lot of fun, a lot of photo opportunities, you know, over the years, and, you know, it was one of my favorite things about the job. So I would, you know, be interested in finding out more as things progress, if they progress for me, specifically what the department is. I've had a good impression so far of the new chief. He seems to be very proactive in trying to address situations and look at the bigger scope of things going forward as soon as possible. He hasn't been chief for that long a period of time, but I've already seen him between, you know, doing this, the, you know, green to the whole testing thing for this, and setting up this committee. I know he's a big proponent of that, too, because he wants the feedback from the people. So I mean, the, one of the bigger things would be to get that feedback and figure out the ways, you know, if that report that they had generated is suggested in some ways. So obviously delve into that, but try to get the feedback directly to see where people think are lacking, what they're doing right, what they're doing wrong, just things that can be changed, or, you know, one way or the other. I don't know if I covered all your questions, but those-
I don't want to take up too much time, but I do have one more quick question.
Sure.
And this is from me. So I, you know, I know that there's been a ton of research that's gone into the various, the expectations of police officers, and, you know, the mental health component, the de-escalation component, and how, you know, we're expecting our police officers to take on so many, so many different things. And I'm wondering if you could talk very briefly about your vision for how to help, you know, what the town interaction with the police department can be so that we are helpful.
Well, for, on the police end of things, the training is really the key aspect of it. So, you know, for the various use of force and de-escalation, de-escalation is a huge thing. And we used to do a lot of role-playing in Hampton, where we'd have actual scenarios and everything from somebody suicidal to, you know, just different things that were played out. And I found those exercises extremely good, because you would start to see the thought process, because a lot of times, you can teach a lot of things at the academy or even in class, but until you really put somebody in a situation and they have to kind of maybe backpedal, take a step back and think if this is, is this the right way to be handling the situation? You know, anything that, again, that I'm thinking that, that test that came, the examination that came in a few months ago from that agency probably maybe touched on it briefly, but, you know, I'd be really interested to see how much Exeter has as far as the training for that, and also preparing offices, because a lot of them, especially brand-new out of the academy, they may not know, you know, what their options are. It may be more very, you know, on or off, you know, binary, as far as I have to do this or I don't have to do this. But to let them see that they have discretion to be able to de-escalate things is a really huge thing. And from the town people's standpoint, the more, the more conversation they can have with the police officers, the more with the department itself, and more comfortable that they are, even if an issue is not the most comfortable issue to be talking about, it needs to be discussed. Because without it, then, you know, everybody's either ignoring it or they're not aware of it. So it's really critical to work on those communication chains.
Thank you. Darrell.
Thank you so much, Timothy, but my question is more about the landscape of Exeter as a town, like what you see, the unique challenges in this town as far as, like, our kind of diversity here, which may not be as cultural as it is economic. So can you use your assessment of some of the challenges in serving the spread that you've seen over these 19 years?
Sure. I mean, obviously, you know, PEA is a huge component of town, so I don't even, I have no idea how many countries are represented in the student body, but I would imagine many dozens, for sure. So, you know, that is definitely a big component, you know, high concentration downtown area, but, you know, to have some sort of interaction, again, I don't know what Exeter has so far, but some sort of interaction with PEA as well to make those kids feel comfortable, knowing, you know, where, who they can turn to if something, you know, if they have to address some, you know, something on the police end of things, or what options they have just as a student walking around downtown. Obviously, on the other end of the spectrum is the aging population in Exeter is really, you know, starting to get up there. You know, we have some of the 55 and up older communities off, you know, like Guinea Road and a few other things in town. And the, you know, the age is starting to go up there. One of the challenges with that is that maybe not all the older residents are as technological savvy. So you can't always expect them to be jumping on some Zoom meeting or something like that. They may feel more comfortable with, you know, going and having it, when, obviously, with all this COVID stuff, you know, everything's up in the air. But if you took that out of the picture for a moment, some capacity to actually meet in person means a lot more to some people than, you know, being able to do it remotely or even on the phone. So, I mean, these are all challenges. The weirdest time, obviously, don't explain to you guys, with my kids at home, you know, with schooling and stuff like that, it's just, if you told me a year ago what you're facing all this, I'd, you know, it'd be crazy. But those are things I see. Definitely, you know, a lot of diversity downtown. And I don't think most, a lot of the town that is not centered around downtown, the outskirts of Exeter, I don't know how much that plays into their realization of how diverse it is, you know, in the middle of the school week when there are dozens and dozens of kids from different countries all, you know, mingling around and trying to find their way downtown and make themselves at home for the next, you know, four years or so.
Thank you.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf, do you have any questions for Timothy?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Select Woman Gilman.
No, thank you, Timothy, for volunteering. I think all my questions have been asked, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And same with me, Timothy. Thank you so much for your interest in submitting your application. We have 10 other people that we need to interview. We're going to do so over the next couple of weeks. And then once we interview everybody, we'll be deliberating, and we'll be back in touch with you. But do you have any final questions for us, sir?
Not at this time, no. I just appreciate the opportunity to come and, well, come and talk with everybody.
Great. And thank you for your interest in applying.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Next, we have the application of Mr. Elliot Berkowitz, and I know he's online. I saw him earlier. You still with us, Elliot?
I'm still here.
There you are. Again, I'll let you, you know, talk for a few minutes about your interest, your background, and then we'll open it up to the Board for questions.
Okay. I retired from the New York City Police Department in 1984. When my wife found out I was eligible for retirement, she told me I was done. And we moved to Exeter in 1985, when we bought Exeter Subaru, when it was still located out on Epping Road, where I now have First Student Bus Company. So we've been in Exeter, my wife is a New Hampshire resident, but I've been in Exeter since 1985. I own quite a bit of real estate in Exeter and Hampton and up north. And I have a, I have four children, one who lives right here in Water Street, three others in Florida and New York, and seven grandchildren. And my interest in this is anything I can do to help the town of Exeter, I'm interested in doing. When this thing, when this first came out with the application, two police officers showed up at my office and said, "You will apply to this." So I did, and I'm very interested in anything that could help. I see what's going on around the country. I'm personally horrified at what I see, and I will do anything to make sure that that does not happen in Exeter, New Hampshire.
Great. Thank you. Selectman Brown, we'll start with you this time.
Yes, my first question is, if you wave, can I see you?
Yes, you can. I can see you turning. I watch you all the time opening a shop, and you're doing a good job.
Policing continues. That's good. Same question I had for Timothy about the unique, again, here, cultural diversity may concentrate at PEA, but what about the economic diversity? Like, what unique policing challenges do you see that where marginalized communities in Exeter might be things to think about for this?
I think Exeter is a unique town in that it's, with Phillips Exeter Academy here, it brings children, kids from all over the world. And the downtown never has any downtime, it seems, although with this coronavirus, it's been a little slow around here. But I just think that these people need to know that they have friends in town. I think the police are very good at what they do. I'm vaguely familiar with the new chief. And I think that we just need to make sure that anybody who needs help can get it very quickly and without, without feeling any threat to themselves. And I'm always available for that, and I think the police are, I think we have a great police department.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Brown. Select Woman Cowan.
Hey, Elliot, thank you so much for applying. It's nice to see you.
You're welcome.
I also just have the same two questions that I asked the previous applicant about, you know, the questions from the chief, which are, you know, where do you think the strengths are in the Exeter Police Department, and then what do you see that could be improved? And then my question about, you know, we depend on the police to do so many things. What is your perspective on, you know, how can we be a partner?
I think that the police have to be, and I'll reiterate what Timothy said, although I'm a little intimidated by somebody that speaks five languages. I'm still struggling with English. And, but, but just that people can get any help that they need. I think that the police in this town, and I'm an observer, having been a police officer, I watch how people do things. And I watch them, and they, they cover, it seems to me, they cover every inch of this town all the time. I see them at night checking around out back, and they do an excellent job. Obviously, we all need some more training with what's going on around the country. And as I said, I will, I'll do anything that I could do to help to make sure that Exeter does not see those type of things. And I'm not sure, I think I missed part of your question. Did I cover it, or?
I mean, I think that that was a good, those were good answers. My other, the other part of the question was ways that you see that Exeter Police Department could improve.
Where could they improve? Well, I think everybody can always improve. Off the top of my head, I could not tell you where I see that they are missing on things. I think that they're very interactive. I think they're, they know this town inside out. And I'm sure we can always learn more, and I'm sure they can, and we'll do that through the process. But I couldn't, off the top of my head, tell you where I think that they're missing anything.
Select Woman Cowan, did you have any other questions for Mr. Berkowitz?
Don't.
Thank you. Select Woman Roundtree Olaf, do you have any questions for Mr. Berkowitz?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Select Woman Gilman.
No, I do not. Hey, Elliot, thank you for volunteering. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Julie. Nice to see you, too.
And you've answered all my questions, Elliot. Again, as I said to Timothy, we have nine other people to interview. We'll be doing that over the next couple of meetings, and then we'll get back to you. But thank you very much for your interest, and thank you for what you do to our, in our community.
You're very welcome, and thank you all, and I'll see you soon.
Great. Thanks. Take care. Good night.
Bye.
That concludes our board interviews for this evening, so now we'll jump into our regular meeting agenda. Before we get into the next agenda item, though, I'd just like to reiterate. Over the past several hours this afternoon, I received multiple emails, all of which I think I replied to. This is not a special Select Board meeting. This is not an emergency meeting. This is a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting that has been on the schedule for at least a month. It's been posted on the town website for a month, and the agenda and the packet were posted as they are regularly Friday afternoon. So I just want everybody to understand that though there is a public hearing tonight as part of the agenda, this is a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting that has been on the calendar for at least a month. So with that said, we will, we will begin the regular portion of our August 24th, 2020 Select Board meeting. And again, with us this evening, we have Town Moderator, Mr. Paul Scafidi, along with Town Clerk Andy Kohler, and Vicky from the Supervisor Checklist, all of whom are going to fill us in with updates on what we can expect during the primary on September 8th. And I think, Mr. Scafidi, you'll lead off and let us know that since you were last here, things have already changed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The state has thrown a few curves here and there and done a few extra things that they didn't, two weeks ago when I was last here, but it's not too bad this time. Just to fill you in, Chief Wilking went over to Epping on Wednesday, and we picked up all the PPP equipment that's going to be brought to the polling place and set up to get everything as safe as we possibly can. The only thing we were missing were 9,500 pens that didn't make it. I guess quite a few towns besides us didn't get them, so they are being shipped to the town clerk's office. And knock on wood, pray to God, whatever you want to say, they get there before September 8th, so we don't have to scramble out to try to find 4,000 pens. What's really has changed about the way we're going to vote, two big items are, the moderator has been given the authority to require if he or she desires to have masks worn during the election. And while I am going to ask that everybody that's voting to please wear a mask, I am going to use the word "require," so I can do a little maneuvering of the voting place to get, make sure that everybody who wants to vote, whether they have a mask or they're not going to wear a mask, they're all going to be voting in the same location, the Talbot Gym. They're just going to be coming through a different entrance and leave by a different exit. But everybody will be in the gym, so we're not splitting the room where you can't see one or the other. That way, there, as moderator, I can control both areas, because if we have a separate room for the mask and non-mask, then we have to have it staffed by somebody the whole time that would take my place in that room and go back and forth. So I am going to use the requirement that all voters wear a mask, and they can come through the atrium, come up and go to the ballot clerks', check in, go and do their voting, and leave. If they don't want to wear a mask, we briefly talked about this two weeks ago. They were parked in the parking lot, but they'll have to walk around to the front of the Talbot Gym on Linden Street, go through those doors. They will literally look at it. If you look at the gym and remember the gym, it'll be right underneath the basketball hoop where we usually open up the absentee ballots. That's the location for the non-masked people. They will have their own voting machine on that side of their room, and they can come in, check in using an Alpha checklist, which then the person will check their ID, go to their alphabet at the other tables, grab the ballot they want, come back, person can vote, put it in the machine, and leave. I think that's the safest way for all of us to do it. We will be doing the social distancing, making sure that everybody's staying six feet apart. Again, husbands and wives are significant others, or people who live in the same household. They can stand next to each other. That's not going to be a problem. It's just that people behind them, in front of them, side of them are going to make sure we do that six-foot distancing. I want to reemphasize that I've done all the time now is absentee ballots. Andy, Town Clerk Kohler, can talk to that better than I am of how many we're getting in. We're getting quite a few in. Why don't I stop it here and let Andy talk briefly about absentee ballots? Andy, if you would?
Sure. As of today, we have 1,800 ballots out. We have not even half of that back, but we do have 1,800 absentee ballot requests out in the mail. The last day, well, let's see, we do have a drop-off box. If you have an absentee ballot, it's, I have taken over the will write room Monday through Friday. If you want to drop off a ballot, or if you want to register to vote, if you want to pick up an absentee ballot, that's for the state primary only. The presidential election ballot will not be out until after the primary, and probably, I'm hoping it's going to be early, like late September, early October. So we're hoping for that. Let's see. Also, if the will write room is not- Also, if the Willwright Room is not open, if it's not open and I'm not there, that you can always drop off your ballot and do all your business as far as absentee work with the town clerk's office at the, at the counter. So we're just trying to separate, at least for the next two weeks, the town clerk's counter from the absentee so that the girls at the counter can get vehicle registrations done and, you know, dog registrations and all of that. So, and also the last day to drop off your absentee ballot or have any business to do with absentee ballots will be Monday, that's September 7th. That's Labor Day between the hours of three and five. You can, you won't be able to register to vote. However, you will be able to pick up an absentee ballot, fill it out and drop it off in the drop off box. So, and that's all I've got.
Thanks, Andy. I'm Vicky Navoycheck. I'm one of your supervisors who have the checklist. We are the keepers of the voting list here in Exeter. I represent a party of three, John Crowley, as well as Michelle Burke. We are very excited for this election. It's unprecedented times, as we've all heard. But we are also responsible for voter registration. We host, we are hosting two sessions this week, Tuesday evening from seven to 7:30 and then on Saturday morning from 11 to 11:30. Now, that said, those are times that we are to gather and approve whoever has been registered. If we have people coming in to register to vote, we will still be open. We won't be shutting the doors at 11:30 or at 7:30. But we encourage you to come in and go ahead and register to vote. If because of COVID, you do have an opportunity due to the fact that our governor has put in an executive order, you can call the town clerk personally and request a voter registration absentee packet. That will include your registration form, which has to be stamped original. We have to receive the originals back. We do also require form of your ID. So who you are, your age, your domicile, that is where you rest your head, not a P.O. box and not a mailbox that some people may have as a direct mail. But we need to have your physical address. So that could be a piece of mail. It could be a registration for your vehicle, anything that has that labeled. And then of course, your citizenship. Proof of citizenship, just to let everybody know, I know a lot of us have received our real IDs. However, those are not considered forms of citizenship. Our state actually gives those to refugees, from what I am told. So those do not prove citizenship, even though you had to prove your citizenship in order to receive one. So please bring either a birth certificate, a passport, passport card, naturalization papers, or for those that may have been adopted from overseas, your adoption papers and such. But you should have any of those documentations. But don't fret, you are still able to register to vote if you do not have any of that documentation. In order to register to vote though, without documentation, we do ask that you come in person to register, either seeing the town clerk or seeing one of us as the supervisors. Andy, did I miss anything or Paul?
I don't think so.
Oh, sounds good, Vic.
Great. So just last thing, last day that we are receiving registrations is Saturday, the 29th. That doesn't mean that you can't register to vote on Election Day. You still can. If you are turning 18 on Election Day, you can still register to vote prior to the election if you do not want to go into the polling station. We will have you written in as a registered voter. It's just you cannot be on, we'll have you written in, but you can still vote. Please come. But we, like Paul said, please think about and really seriously consider your absentee ballot options this year. I know mail-in voting has been a big conversation all over this nation. I'm here to tell you, New Hampshire does not have, everybody gets a ballot, everybody gets a vote sort of situation. You have to request a ballot in order to vote. So if we don't receive your request for absentee ballot and you send in a ballot, then your ballot doesn't count. So we, there's plenty of checks and balances. I know there's a lot of fear out there. We are here to tell you, it is safe, it's secure, and it has been there for decades. So please, you know, lines are going to be long, six feet apart. There is going to be a lot of restrictions. This is not going to be every other election where you're able to stroll right in, have a little chit chat with your ballot clerks or whoever you see, and then stroll on out. You will be waiting. And I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to be very real and very realistic. Bathrooms will not be open for the public. So if there is a line and you have to use the restroom, there might be some challenges that you might be faced with. We will not deny anybody a right to vote. Like Paul said, mask or no mask, you will still have an opportunity. Thank you, select board, for allowing us to be here, town, town manager as well. But if anybody does have any questions, the SOC, known as the supervisors, the checklist, we do have an inbox of, an email. So feel free to reach out to us with any questions or concerns. We're happy to serve you as, as our, as our citizens.
Thank you, Vicky.
All right, Nick, if I, Nico, if I could, to continue on with this, if you're coming with a mask, be prepared to have an ID. Everybody has to have an ID. I was questioned a couple of times in the March election, why we required people to have a ID. He said, this is not a state law. Well, I hated to break it to him, but it is. So you have to have an ID. When you show your ID, you may be asked by the ballot clerk to please lower your mask so they can make sure it's who the ID says you are. Here's the issue with that. The state is asking us to tell people before they remove their mask or lower it to sanitize hands. Lower the mask, put the mask back up, sanitize your hands again. Then we hope they'll be dry enough so you can go into the voting booth and vote and not mess up the ballot because if the ballots get wet, they could cause a problem. Another issue that's a little contradictory to what the town clerk talked about absentee ballots. Yes, they have to be in by five o'clock on Monday. If they're mailed in, they have to be in by Tuesday. Is it five o'clock, Andy, for Tuesday? Okay, the big issue now is we have what is called in New Hampshire, a law, they call it curbside voting, which it really is not curbside voting. But if you want to vote and you're afraid to go into the voting booth to get a ballot, you can now drive your car. We're going to have an area on Linden Street where people can drive up, show an ID. We can check them off the list. They will be given an absentee ballot at that location to fill out, including the affidavit forms, the envelopes, and then fill out the ballot. They will put everything into the envelopes, seal it, give it to the person. We'll have outside waiting for them to give it back to them. And then that will be considered an absentee ballot as far as the elections are concerned. We will then bring it inside, check it off the voting list. Then your ballot will count and it'll go through the absentee ballot opening and closing like we do. The other thing I want people to realize is patience is going to be a really big part of the day. No matter how many absentee ballots we get, we're still going to have two, 2,500 or more people vote in person. That means they're going to be six feet apart. The lines are going to, when you get there, the lines are going to look, oh my God, what am I going to do? Sorry about that, but there's nothing we can do about it. We're going to have people stationed all through the voting area to try to keep people in line, to move them along. If we find an alphabet, a letter that has an opening on the table, there's nobody there, we'll walk up and down the lines and say, anybody have a B in their first name or last name? Move them up, get them moving as far as we could. Because of social distancing, there's only going to, so many people are going to be allowed in the Talbot Gym at one time. There's just nothing we can do about it. But we're going to try to move it as fast as we can. We're going to try to make it as simple as we can. But if you really want to help us out, even though it's more work for us in the long run, absentee ballot is the way to do it. Like Andy said, town clerk said, she's in the Willwright Room. Go see her, bring her a cup of coffee, whatever. You know, sorry about that, Andy. So at least that, you know, you can sign up. Like Vicky says, we're not turning anybody away. You can vote. If you don't have an ID, we'll still let you vote, but we're going to take your picture. We're going to make sure you are who you are. When we're doing absentee ballots, people can come, we're going to open, start checking them in on Thursday or Friday before it. You can come in and actually watch us do it. There's a law that says we have to allow the public in. So please, if you feel that you want to see the process, all you're going to do is see us check us off of, run a yellow line through an end name. But that's just how it's going to be. It's going to be a slow process. But this is also going to be a great trial for us to come November. So everybody, the more patients we get out of you, the more absentee ballots we get out of all of us, everything easier, smoother. We're looking for people to just keep it cool. Like Vicky said, no bathrooms. The public can't stay in the building. Once you get your ballot, get in the ballot booth, check it off, put it in the machine, then you got to go. Not that we don't like to see you and talk to you. I got plenty of friends and I see them all the time. I'm going to be, everybody sends them a little nasty on that part, but no talking, keep moving. We got to move it. We need the space. So I don't know if anybody has any questions of the three of us. We're going to, I was there, one more meeting, Nico, before, Mr. Chairman, before this?
Next, next Monday, the 31st.
Yeah, I'm going to do one. We'll try to get everything as solidified from the state as we possibly can.
Great.
So next week, when we meet up with everybody, hopefully we'll have it as solid and as neat in a package as to make this all even. Any questions?
Before Paul takes, before we take questions, there are two websites that people should be aware of. The Exeter Town website, exeternh.gov/townclerks. That has, lists everything on COVID-19, on voting, what you need to register to vote, how to get your absentee ballot. You can even look up if you're registered to vote. The second is the sosdus.nh.gov as well, which is the Secretary of State's webpage, which also includes all this information as well. We encourage everybody to please utilize those sites. But again, if you have questions, we're here to help and make sure that voting is open and an opportunity for everybody and all that is of legal age.
Great, thank you, Vicky. That's very useful, those two websites. Mr. Moderator, I have a question for you. But first, just to remind fellow members of the select board that we are expected to be there for the duration of the day and then after the polls close. And if we, for some reason, are not able to be there or be there for part of the day, it is our responsibility to get somebody to, to work that for us. But with that said, Mr. Moderator, how are we looking for volunteers? And what are your needs, if any, at this point?
Well, I, the best one to talk to that is the town clerk. She knows the amount we already have and what we're looking for. So Ms. Kohler, if you want to take it from there?
Sure. I am keeping a list of people that want to volunteer at the polls. And if you're interested, please give us a call at our office or email me. I will need your name, your address, your email address and your phone number. I am keeping a list and we are planning on having training. And I believe that is going to be Wednesday, September 3rd. And it will be at the town hall. And so I will be in contact with all of our volunteers then, before then.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to go on that, I am personally the moderator. I'm looking for assistant moderators. I have three right now, two right now. I'm looking for two more. I would like to have them either be Republicans or undeclared because I have two people that are Democrats that are already signed up. So we always try to balance out two Republicans are undeclared, two Democrats are undeclared. So if we can get, if I can get a couple for that, that would be great. It's going to be a long day for us. One thing I meant to mention that I was asked to mention, that we have accessible voting system, the All for One Voting for the impaired. We have that available for people that are kind of worried about the COVID and helping out. So we have that set up as well. I want to thank the police department, the fire department, the highway department, all the town departments that have helped us out over these next two weeks to eight weeks. They've been great with making sure that we get what we need. We're going to have plenty of police on duty that day for no other reason other than to try to help us in the lines and keep people moving, keep, keeping traffic moving, to make sure that everybody is, is getting in and out as possibly and quickly as we can. So other than that, next Monday, I hopefully have things lined up and solidified from the Secretary of State's office.
Terrific, thank you. Any questions of either Paul, Andy or Vicky from the board? And because I can't see you, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, I'll ask you if you have any questions.
No questions, just ready to move on since we have a really packed schedule today.
We do indeed, thank you. Okay, thank you, all three of you, and we'll see you next Monday night.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Next on our agenda, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment or speak to the board on any matter. We do ask though, that if you do have public comment that is relevant to anything that's on the agenda, that you wait for it to come up at that time on the agenda. But at this time, if you have anything you wish to comment on outside of an agenda item, I will open that up. I'm going to pause briefly while I look to see if there are any hands up. And I see we have a hand up, Mr. Ruffner. Mr. Ruffner, you look like you might be muted. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, guys. I'm just checking in about a few items from previous meetings and an event we just had this weekend. So first off, because I was not part of the meeting a couple of weeks ago where our postponement for Swayze Park was denied. You know, I just wanted to voice some concern and some of the feedback that I've gotten from a lot of citizens and artists in the community. There was a lot of disappointment and confusion and, you know, really just not an understanding of the difference between what we were looking to do in the park and what the farmer's market has been doing in the park. And obviously, a lot of concern over some of the comments from the select board trying to differentiate the farmer's market as an essential business as opposed to artist vendors, you know, which obviously a lot of people took exception with. It's sort of implying they're not an essential business. And these are terms that on behalf of, you know, these artists and musicians, I've checked in with the state. And this is a term that is no longer applicable in our current climate. So I would encourage the board, you know, again, as I've done in the past and this applies for the entire board, to do their homework a little better. So if they're going to deny a permit and use something as an essential business as a reason for that, they at least have a better understanding of where the state stands. At this point, all businesses are essential. Everybody's trying to pay their bills. Everybody's trying to stay active and do what they can. So we, we went ahead and we found someone that could host the event on Route 27 on Epping Road. And we worked with Saw Belly Brewing and Mike Lambert from New England Truck Center. And we did an event and we had a great response. But to be honest with you guys, the overwhelming narrative of the day was, this is great. Why are we not in Swayze Park where we have more room to socially distance? Where, where children can run around in the green spaces, where people in their lawn chairs can be seated socially distanced in a nice green space and not in an asphalt parking lot. So the event was great. But again, I encourage you to use the spaces that we have in town to help our local artists and our local businesses, you know, stay afloat during these times. And I would encourage you guys, I've been tuning into some of the meetings after the fact and hear a lot about what are other towns doing? You know, what is Durham doing? What is Portsmouth doing? What is Keene doing in terms of mask mandates and other issues? And so if that's going to be the protocol, I would encourage you guys to do the same for arts and culture and business. And you would see that in Portsmouth, they've put a $50,000 for a pop-up venue in the center of town where local artists and food vendors are entertaining the public in a socially distanced, safe setting. So there's certainly a precedent there for these kinds of... So there's certainly a precedent there for these kinds of things. And we have this beautiful park with a, with a stage right there, um, where these types of things, uh, can happen. So, you know, I really encourage you guys to take a look at, at what these other towns are doing. Um, and then lastly, in, in the last couple of meetings, I've heard some references to, um, the mask mandate and that, um, people are speaking on behalf of, uh, downtown businesses. And the downtown businesses are in, are in favor of certain things.
Excuse me one moment. We're, we're gonna be getting into that. That is an agenda item. And I'd love to have your feedback on that during that time.
Yep, but this is in reference to comments from two previous meetings, and I'm not gonna be able to stay on for that. I'm on vacation, uh, with my family. So this is in direct reference to comments made in two previous meetings where, where, uh, town officials and town employees have represented that they have spoken for downtown businesses. So I just wanted to put out there that, um, a, as a director of a nonprofit that has an 80% uh, member rate for downtown businesses, I have followed up with 16 downtown business owners and downtown Exeter retailers. And zero of those 16 business owners have heard from any representative from the town of Exeter, whether it be a Select Board member or a town employee. Um, so there certainly is not a representation in these discussions for these business owners. And many of them are concerned about speaking up. Um, and their biggest concern is they don't have a problem with, uh, mask mandates for inside their businesses. But of the 16, 14, uh, would not like to see anything, uh, that, that contributes to further division or vitriol on the sidewalks, uh, for people outside. Uh, there was one business owner that owns two businesses, but also owns a business in Newburyport. And she did not have so much concern because she said in Newburyport they passed the mandate, but that nothing was actually enforced, um, and that it really didn't affect things, which, you know, is good to know, but at the same time, uh, entering into these discussions, um, you know, I feel like if, if people are being spoken for, then they should certainly be spoken to, um, a, ahead of time. So, um, I will leave you guys with that. And, um, thanks for, uh, giving me the time. Oh, and last thing, as a, as a, as a citizen myself, I actually live downtown. Um, and so I, I heard some discussion a couple of weeks ago about, uh, neighborhoods and, 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 you know, where people outside may be expected to wear masks and not wear masks. So I do encourage you guys to be cognizant that-
Yeah, we've got a full presentation when it comes up on the agenda, um, but I appreciate your comments and your thoughts tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, next we have, um, it says Cold, Cold Engines, uh, but I take it that's not your name. If you could just state your name and your address?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, my name is David Druin. I live on 27 Ernest Ave here in Exeter, New Hampshire.
Good evening, Dave.
How you doing? I've been following along with the, uh, Select Board meetings for the last month or so. And, uh, my wife is an educator here at one of the schools in town. And I as well am an educator here in town and an artist here in town, who has been a full-time artist since, uh, the 90s, actually. And, uh, following along with how things have been going has, I mean, I first of all, want to thank all of you guys on the Select Board for taking the pandemic as seriously as, you know, it seems to be. I mean, to call it a massive cloud of uncertainty is like a grave understatement. I've heard from people that have lost loved ones. I've heard, you know, we've, my, in my own family have lost, uh, my wife's father recently. And, you know, so we, we understand the serious nature of the situation and really where the past few meetings and in regards to the arts in town have got me and my wife concerned is that delineation between, uh, like kind of essential workers and us being like, I guess, you know, financially in the lower class of the people that live here in town. I mean, you know, just, just as the numbers go. Uh, we do make most of our living and feed our children through art that we make here in town. And, uh, so really Scott Ruffner and the Town Exeter Arts and Music Organization have been like really pulling out all the stops to try to get food on our tables. And, uh, some hope in our hearts spiritually and, uh, financially. So, uh, it would have been really great. I think I wanna, I wanna second that opinion that Mr. Ruffner expressed that it would have been really great to use like a big, open, green space to help support a lot of the local food, uh, art vendors, musicians, people in town that really bring cultural diversity into Exeter. And, uh, especially in regards to the original event being a, a call to action for many of the Black Lives Matter community and them being kind of like stifled out during the, the last, uh, downvote of the event and not being able to be fit into that like parking lot pop-up scenario. Uh, it was, it felt a little dehumanizing to be, to be looked upon as non-essential for the first few weeks of it. And then it started to feel really kind of like, uh, a real sense of almost worthlessness for us people here, kind of, I mean, at the metaphorical bottom of the hierarchy of needs in regard to essential working. Uh, but, you know, that being said, I do have wild and great respect for the tough decisions that you guys on the Select Board have had to make throughout this thing. And, uh, I can only imagine how hard it is to vote either way on any of these issues. It often feels like a rock and a hard place. But I just wanted to put out my, uh, my heartfelt kind of opinion on as a, uh, working artist here in town who does feed his children and support his family through his art and how, uh, those decisions affect me and my family directly. And even though sometimes the nonprofit organizations in town and other surrounding towns can seem somewhat, uh, oppositional or combative when it comes to pushing for their events and whatnot, that I truly believe in my heart that their intentions are to actually help those of us who bring our art into the world. Because that's of course, when everything gets the worst and everyone's turning to something to make themselves feel better, whether it's Netflix, movies, music, or whatever, they turn to the artist. And here we are, uh, you know, doing our best to survive. A lot of us facing kind of imminent eviction and, uh, really, really hard times. So, uh, with a full understanding of the seriousness of the pandemic and the ramifications it has on those of us who are already kind of financially struggling before that began, in the cliche term of the starving artist, I'd just like to keep that dichotomy clear, uh, as best I can as a citizen here who loves the town and appreciates the board and has children in the schools in town and a wife who is an educator here in town. Uh, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me.
Dave, hold, hold on one second. Thank you very much for your thoughts. And, um, we talked a couple of meetings ago about, uh, we're gonna be looking at the board creating a cultural commission. And I'm hoping to get that next step on the agenda for either the next meeting or the meeting after, but certainly given your passion for the arts and given your passion for our town, uh, hopefully you'll, you'll, uh, tune in and listen and perhaps that's something you'd be interested in, in talking with us about in the future. And we'd look forward to that.
I would love to be a part of that. And, uh, as anything to do, like I, I helped Joe Hill out, a great citizen here, Stephen King's son, with his, uh, readings up at the town hall. And I've been a part of anything I could be a part of, including singing the National Anthem at our annual 5K at the Exeter Day School. And I do everything I can to reach out and, and, and help the children and people of the community, uh, not only bring in diversity culturally, uh, in regards to Mamadou and the Black Lives Matter movement and, uh, just showing my solidarity and my, my true lack of understanding of a lot of these things by just being available to listen and, and feel what people are saying, much like I've listened and felt what you all on the Select Board have been saying and what Mr. Ruffner has been saying and really what the country has been saying as a whole. So I would love to be a part of any initiative as such. And, uh, I'd like to serve as a bridge between, uh, some of the less fortunate people here in town who are zooming in from, you know, some apartment buildings and, and facing some more grave situations than maybe some of the more affluent members who I don't for one second think aren't dealing with this as harshly. But, you know, there is, I have felt a lack of the artists that Scott Ruffner is fighting for, our voices being heard. So Nico, it's wonderful hearing that that is an initiative that you would like to be presenting. And of course, I would love to be a part of it. And, uh, I'm at the Select Board's disposal for, uh, at anything you guys need. But thanks again for giving me some time to speak tonight.
Thank you, David. Be well. Next we have, uh, Robin Tiner. Robin, if you could just, uh, state your address as you introduce yourself. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, Robin Tiner, 9 Millstream Drive. Um, and I'm sorry I missed the name, but I appreciate the comments of the fellow who just spoke. Um, I think one of the concerns that I've had is we, I'm not sure we're fighting the real problems. Sometimes we're fighting maybe a problem that's not there. And he highlights that there are a lot of people in the community struggling. And I, I bet you there are places where you could walk down the street, knock on the doors and no one has any idea. There's a Select Board meeting tonight, let alone how to get in. And, and maybe there's some ways, especially if there's gonna be public hearings, to, um, do something other than post it over the weekend, um, when it's big things affecting a lot of people. Um, I, I sent a, an email to y'all a couple of weeks ago, just I was concerned with some things, mainly, um, consistency. Um, where, and you know, I think I had given a couple of examples of things like if we're gonna talk about a topic, let's try to make sure the stakeholders are there. We had a couple of sustainability items came up, but the Sustainability Committee wasn't invited. The Sustainability Officer wasn't invited. Um, we had some moving goalposts or canceling an event after it had been approved, after the person had gotten off the phone. And I think I was hoping that would stop. But it sort of happened again where we had, um, last week, a great presentation from the intern. And then I, you know, sent a note to the Sustainability Chair to kind of say, hey, yay! And, and found out that yet again, she was not informed or invited it was happening and they hadn't gotten the debrief her. And, um, so I guess I'm, I guess I want to make sure that and would like to hear from y'all that there's gonna be an effort made to include stakeholders in things when they come up. Um, and, um, a, and I think to make sure we are properly representing things that we say so that if, like the example that just came up was with the business owners. I also walked down a street and walked in a half a dozen businesses and nobody had been contacted whatsoever. So if we're making statements like the business owners say, or most people say, I think those need to be able to be backed up, um, with, you know, hey, we talked to 15 out of 40 or 15 out of 16 or whatever it is. But I think right now especially, it's important to be very clear and very transparent on those types of things. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And we will be talking more about that when we do get to that agenda item. I do not see any other hands up, but I will pause for a moment just to see if there's any other public comment. And I don't see any, so we will move on. Closed public comment. Uh, we do not have any proclamations or recognitions this evening. We do have three sets of minutes though to approve, uh, from July 13th, 2020, from July 27th, 2020, and also August 10th. Um, are there any revisions or amendments to any of those three sets of minutes from the board? Okay, seeing none, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board minutes of July 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectwoman Lovey Round, Lovey Roundtree Olaf. I'm gonna get, you know?
We're getting creative tonight.
I know. Uh, the clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Minutes approved unanimously. I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the extra Select Board minutes of July 27th, 2020. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Uh, the clerk abstained, says I was not present. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes four, zero, one abstention. And I will entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board minutes of August 10th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown.
Abstained.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Yes.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. The motion passes four, zero, with one abstention. Okay, and now we have two appointments. Um, at this time, I would, uh, seek a motion to approve Connor Berry as an alternate member to the Recreation Advisory Board, term to expire April 30th, 2022. So moved.
So moved.
Motion second. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Was that an aye? Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'll now seek a motion to appoint Jackie Ojala to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, term to expire April 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Uh, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, and at this time, also I'd like to just mention, uh, regarding the Sustainability Advisory Committee, we still have one open term. So if anybody is interested, please send an application to Mr. Dean's office through his secretary Pam. Um, regrettably, we have one resignation, uh, this evening from Amy McLaughlin, who's just really done some absolutely great work with the Health and Human Services Committee. We're very sorry to see Amy, uh, resign. Uh, but at this time, um, she has submitted her letter of resignation. So I will entertain a motion to accept, uh, Amy McLaughlin's resignation.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Yes, with regret. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Regrettably, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move into our discussion action items. The first of which is the public hearing, um, regarding the emergency mask ordinance proposal. Uh, just to give a brief background on this, um, there was discussion and a vote at the last Select Board meeting of August 10th, 2020 to charge the health officer with drafting a mask ordinance for the board to review and to open up for a public hearing at this regularly scheduled August 24th, 2020 meeting. Uh, in addition to the meeting being posted as it was regularly scheduled, in addition to the agenda and packet being posted Friday afternoon, I believe mention of this meeting has been, uh, in, in both, uh, Seacoast Online papers for the past Fridays. Seacoast Online papers for the past Fridays. So I'm hoping that everybody that wanted to be here tonight is here for the public hearing. Before we move further, though, we do need to open the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the emergency mask ordinance.
I move we open a public hearing on the emergency mask ordinance. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliph.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair.
Aye. Public hearing is now open. Before we begin, I think it would be prudent for Mr. Murray to come on first and tell us about the draft he's written since we last met and charged him with this. I'd also like, after Mr. Murray is done, for Darren Winham, our economic developer, to give us an update. It's my understanding that Mr. Winham has met with a large number of businesses, both in the downtown and surrounding areas in Exeter. And then at that point, I will open it up to the public. Once everybody from the public has spoken, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Any questions before we go to Mr. Murray? Great. James, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. So the ordinance I've drafted up, I was able to pull from a lot of other communities that have passed mask ordinances for ideas, most of which I felt strongly applied to our town. We have kind of bits and pieces, I felt like the best of the best from these different ordinances, things that I feel apply to the people of Exeter and the downtown area. It is very difficult to put common sense onto paper with these kinds of things, but I did my best to put together what I thought made sense, and hopefully the board and the people of Exeter will agree. The intent is not to be playing mask chicken on the streets, per se, not to be taking pictures of our neighbors not wearing masks. The intent is to put together a guideline that will remind the people of Exeter and our visitors, everyone that wearing a mask is what the CDC and the WHO recommend at this time as a good prevention measure. So that being said, that is where the conditions of this ordinance come from.
And James, do you have any recommendations as to, you know, length of time? I mean, obviously, I think we had talked about this at our last Select Board meeting, August 10, that this would be something that would be finite, that we could revisit over time. Obviously, throughout this pandemic, which has now reached five months, I think, everything has been fluid. So based on your research, do you have any suggestions of a timeframe that the board should consider?
I believe that it should be periodically considered. Again, I drew from other communities and set some conditions that would automatically rescind this ordinance. You can see under the effective date section. So 61 days after passing the ordinance, if it has not been reinstated, the ordinance would terminate. If the governor declares an end to the COVID-19 emergency, the ordinance would automatically terminate. Other than that, the ordinance may be rescinded at any time per the Select Board. So it, like, with the fluid situation, something that we would need to periodically revisit, but there are automatic conditions written into the ordinance as it stands right now that would terminate it effective immediately.
Before we move to Mr. Winham, any members of the board have any specific questions for Mr. Murray? And Selectwoman Roundtree Oliph, I can't see your hand, so I'm just going to ask if you have any questions.
No questions. I'll hop in at the end if, when you ask if there are questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Winham.
Good evening. Yeah, so at Ross's direction, I did speak to a bunch of businesses. Now, I want people to understand a couple of quick things. First off, I'm in communication with 914 businesses in Exeter, very routinely. That is, sending out emails, and I'm getting a lot of questions about a lot of things COVID-related, as you'd imagine. And the other thing I want to point out is, you know, when we talk to businesses, we don't just talk to downtown Exeter businesses. There's a lot of other businesses of different sizes, different industries, and this mandate, potential mandate, will affect them. So I did not ask any business how they felt about masks outside. I just didn't ask. I only asked about how they felt about how it would affect their business inside. So there's that. I mostly got that they didn't, they were fine with it on the inside. The one exception to that was restaurants. Now, restaurants, the majority of them, have an issue with back of the house and having masks within six feet of their, their coworkers, because it's extremely hot, extremely sweaty. I believe there's a couple restaurants that asked if they could get, come in tonight and speak to that. To that end, I sent an email to the Select Board Chair, the Town Manager, and a health officer. On Saturday morning, I visited every restaurant in the town except two, I believe, on Friday alone. And so I believe James has made that edit, so it's in there now, so the public hasn't seen that piece of it. And so there's that. And then the other thing I want to point out, and I don't mean to be totally focused on restaurants, but they were the ones who really kind of pushed back a bit because of the back of the house. I did call Mike Summers, and Mike Summers is the CEO and President of the LRA, the Lodging and Restaurant Association of New Hampshire, and he stated that he receives phone calls from restaurants, and I can tell you firsthand, this happened in Exeter as well, where a customer didn't want to wear a mask and became belligerent and berated staff. And so his thought was, if we do do a mask mandate that can, you know, satisfy most of the people, that it would be giving restaurants cover, in so much as they could say, look, it's not me doing the mandate, it's the town of Exeter doing the mandate, so don't get mad at me. And hopefully that'll, you know, see incidents like that not happen. But for the most part, most businesses felt it was pretty reasonable, particularly the ones that have employees that are, you know, in industrial-type jobs. They're able to do it, they're able to distance, and they've been doing this for many, many months now, so this isn't going to affect them anywhere near as much. And that's all I have for now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Winham. Any questions from the board to Mr. Winham directly?
Just an extra comment that we're not a restaurant. The business I run on Water Street is a salt cave, and we as well would actually benefit from people taking off their mask in the cave. They're, it's therapeutic. In other countries, doctors are recommending people to come in here, so we have that issue of, you know, where if people wear their mask indoors here, they're negating the effects, the benefits of this for their immune system. So, yeah, 901.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So Daryl, is that like, and I haven't, I've been in there, but I haven't been inside the cave. Is that more than one person in the cave, or is it like?
Yeah, it's a private group, so.
Okay.
All the other sessions are private, so it's a group of multiple people in the same parties, or family members, people who already are together. Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Dean, I have a question for you. Have you also, in addition to the work that Mr. Winham's done, have you been in contact with Mr. Ross and the PEA recently, as well as Mr. Whitney at Exeter Hospital? And if so, have they weighed in on, on this?
Yes, I have been, actually. I was able to share one of the health officer's drafts with Mr. Whitney, and he actually gave us some good assistance from their pediatric wing. Actually, they took a look at the piece of the face coverings regarding children and the, and the recommendations there. So we did get that. And then we've been in regular communication also with the PEA Principal, Mr. Rossen, and had some discussions with him as well. And I know that PEA has their own requirements that they're putting into place already with the students returning. So hopefully I'm characterizing it correctly when he said basically that this kind of thing would be welcomed and supported as far as trying to reinforce the keeping the COVID numbers low. And I think that's the goal everybody has. So both responses have been positive in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know you do, you also have a letter, I know, in your packet tonight, and correspondence from the Chamber of Commerce as well, and they've weighed in on this positively as well.
Thank you.
Got a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I wasn't at the meeting. Who is, Mr. Whitney's, is he a physician at the hospital?
He's a Vice President of Strategic, I believe it's Vice President of Strategy, and Mr. Whitney's been very, I know he's been very active in the community. He's been advising school board and others and weighing in on their, their issues over there. So he's been quite a voice during this period of COVID.
Okay. Mr. Murray, back to you real quickly. And I'm trying to get, I'm trying to anticipate some questions that are going to be asked. I want to get all, as much information out first that we can. Throughout your research, and also based on your expertise, do you have any recommendations or suggestions as to how this would be enforced?
So from what I've heard from other communities, most of the communities do have a fee schedule included. But so far, everyone I've talked to states that education advisement is the primary goal. I do not know of a community yet that has written a single ticket. That's as of a week or so ago. There might be updates to that, but the, the fee structure is not really the goal of the ordinance. It's more education advisement as far as enforcement goes.
Agreed. Okay. And, and are there any example, I mean, is, are, are there any communities that, I mean, for instance, as a health officer, would you take the lead, maybe on enforcing, or would it be something where the businesses would, would take the lead, or police would take the lead? I mean, obviously, I agree with you. I mean, we're not out, this is not to write tickets. This is about public health and, and actually helping our businesses. So, you know, the idea of, you know, writing tickets and all of that, it's not, I don't think, the intent of the board. And I think I brought up at another meeting, you know, I've seen several communities where instead of a ticket, a police officer handed a mask out, just reminded them of the ordinance. But have you seen instances where maybe a health officer or somebody other than law enforcement would take the lead on, on that?
Absolutely. And health officers do serve in an education and advisement position. There is one community, I don't have it in front of me right now, that actually appointed deputy health officers as well to act as the, I guess, enforcement arm in this case. But again, it's mostly just bringing masks down, information from the CDC, WHO, the HHS, and trying to educate and advise. I cannot speak for the capacities of our police department or anything like that as to how enforcement would play out in town. You know, I'd certainly be happy to help as much as I can. Again, I'm limited in my capacity as well. I'm the only one in the health department. I guess I can't speak to that side of things as to, you know, the capabilities.
Okay. But Chief Pullan is here, and he might be able to weigh in before we open it up for public comment. Chief, would you like to opine?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking for my opinion. It's important to know, I reached out to the Municipal Attorney General's Office, and they did mention that a Select Board in creating an ordinance has the ability to define who in fact enforces that ordinance. Currently, the draft is missing that piece of who is enforcing it. I think that's the purpose of tonight, is to try to sort that out and work that out. Mr. Murray's correct. In different towns that have passed these ordinances, some use health officers, some use police, some use a combination of both. And it's not so much how it's enforced that we need to look at. It's the current state of affairs with law enforcement and the people, right? So the relationship between police and the people is very strange right now. Is a health ordinance something we want our police officers being called to enforce? Now, I have full faith in my officers, and we'll treat this, if we're asked to enforce this, just like we treat everything else, with respect, courtesy, and fairness. But we'd be remiss if we don't mention the possibility of a conflict arising out of a police officer in uniform with a badge and a gun enforcing this health issue. And not only that, the appearance of that officer being called to an establishment or to a sidewalk to enforce this, perhaps on a BIPOC population, just the mere presence of a uniformed police officer is going to create unnecessary hardships, or maybe feelings are going to get brought back up. I don't think the people want that. I know my officers don't want to be put in that position. So there's a lot to think about when it comes to enforcement. All you have to do is really do an internet search for police in masks, and you'll see how quickly things can go south. And it won't be long, you know, if that happens here, there's 99.99% of the people, when they're told, please put on a mask, they'll do it, or please put on a mask, or you need to leave, they'll leave. But if they then are faced with, I'm calling the police, and they stay, they've made their mind up for that conflict, right? Rational behavior, the person's going to either put their mask on, or they're going to even come back later. So now we have a police officer that's, that's possibly put in that position. And I've talked with other chiefs in the state that have these ordinances and how they're doing. Yes, it's, it's a heavy approach to education, absolutely. Again, no tickets have been issued. Masks are given out, people are educated, and things are fine. But it's that possibility that if someone just does not want to leave, then what? Now what you're seeing across the country is, okay, the officer will arrest them for criminal trespass or littering. What if there's a use of force incident? Now that the person, there has to be a physical arrest, and an officer has to use force on that person. Now, these are all, this is the reality of law enforcement, right? There's only a few things that we can do to enforce the laws. We ask, we tell, and then we make. Now, if you give that any thought as to what could happen in Exeter, then, you know, we need to do that. We need to think about the possibility of what could happen. If everybody is okay with, I'm not suggesting we use force, but I'm also not suggesting there's going to be cases where an officer just simply cannot walk away. And if they're put in a situation like that, and it just escalates and escalates and escalates, sometimes they just can't walk away. Just points to think of.
Thank you, Chief Pullan. Are there any questions from the board for Chief Pullan before we move to the public? Yes, Selectwoman Cowan?
Hi, Chief. Thank you so much for being here. And I, I feel really sick that we're at this place in terms of the mask debate. But my concern with what you just brought up is the store clerks and the, the employees who are working in, in places that are requiring masks, they're the ones having these conversations. And I feel much more confident that, that the people who should be helping to enforce these law, this mandate, if we enact this mandate, are your, are your trained police officers, rather than 15, 16-year-old store clerks who are, who are working in a, in a business that has said, you have to wear a mask to be in here. So by taking this on and by mandating it and requiring that this is the town of Exeter's position, you must wear a mask, we are then taking on that responsibility. And we are, you know, using, and I'm not sure what the perfect, the perfect match here is for the enforcement component, and I'm excited to hear the, the conversation that takes place. But what I'm hearing is worries from store owners and business owners that they're already having these kind of confrontations, and the people who are tasked with enforcing it shouldn't be tasked with enforcing it. You know, the people that I would trust are the health officers and the police officers.
Right. Go ahead.
And I'm just, that's what I'm hearing, what I'm reaching out, and when people, when business owners are, are talking to me and asking for this mandate.
So I would advocate for, similar to what Hanover's doing, and they have kind of empowered some town officials to act as health officers, a building inspector and a deputy fire chief to go out, and they're also going to hire some more, is my understanding, to respond to these initial calls and treat them as such. If it becomes, if it escalates or becomes anything further than that, obviously, you can call the police. But what I'm advocating is that we remove the police from being the first people to arrive for a health ordinance violation. And we can go further into what these violations look like. If we're talking about tickets, and we're talking about the cycle of poverty, and we're talking about when they don't pay the ticket, their license gets suspended, or they get an arrest warrant, because these are all realities, right? Because the exact same thing that we're talking about. Because it's the exact same thing that we're talking about across the country that we need to fix, especially now with the unemployment due to COVID and everything else. So if it's discussed that we're going to have a strict, strong educated presence, that education should come from a health officer or from another official that's tasked with health duties. If it's a, just write tickets, write tickets, you know, the other day I kind of went downtown and wrote 20 tickets in about 45 minutes.
That's not what we're asking for you to do.
And I would not want to do that, you know, quite frankly, we would lie heavily on discretion and not do that. But, but when we talk enforcement, we have to talk about everything, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I, and I, I mean, I, this is a difficult decision, but this is something that people aren't following. And, and businesses are having to have these awful discussions with people to put on a mask or, or not let them in. And then that sets up this confrontation with a person who is potentially investing in somebody's business. And I would rather have that removed from the situation at all, so businesses aren't worried about making a decision, making a call to, and that, that offends some people. It's us, it's the town government. We were elected to make these tough decisions. We were elected to, to keep people healthy and safe. And that's what I believe, what I'm hearing from folks is that they, that they need. So I would rather have that discussion happen between, you know, if it's the fire department, if it's the police, if it's the health officer, that discussion can take place there and it removes this patron, you know, service relationship, because that's, that's an unequal balance of power there. And that incentivizes people to make unhealthy choices like say, don't, you know, don't worry about this, if, you know, I'm not going to have my 15, 16, 17-year-old store clerks making this enforcement call.
Right. So the imbalance of power would, would be the uniformed police officer there, right? Enforcing a non-criminal ordinance. So I have yet to hear any business owner say they've had to remove anyone from their business or had to call the police. They can do that now. If they have an issue with a patron, they can call us to help remove them. They don't need an ordinance to do that. If someone's unruly or destroying property or anything like that, obviously they can call us and we'll go. What, and I don't think it's going to be the business issue, I think what we're going to see, we're going to see the sidewalk, people walking with no mask on, we're going to have people driving by and make an anonymous calls to the police department. And we're not going to respond to anonymous calls of people not wearing masks if this passes, we're just not. And a lot of these agencies are also not being proactive in this. They're not having directed patrols downtown to enforce masks with their police officers. We have three open positions in this department.
Again, that's not what we're asking you to do.
People are going to, once they hear there's a mask law in Exeter, they're going to call us, remain anonymous and say, I just saw so-and-so, or I just saw this person on the corner with no mask on. So we won't, we won't go to those. Will, if a business calls us, if there's a legitimate, someone was asked to put on a mask and didn't, we'll go to that. If that's what the board and that's what the people of Exeter want us to do, we will. And we will treat it as educationally as we can, as fairly, as non-confrontational as we can, absolutely. But there's that 0.001% chance it can go south. That's all I have to say. I support whatever everyone wants, but I just wanted to get it out there that there's that percentage of having a confrontation in town.
Selectwoman Cowan, do you have any other questions for Chief Pullen?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Pullen?
I had a question, it wasn't, it's regarding the discussion that just happened. So Selectwoman Cowan, is there a specific incident that you're, is there a business that has experienced this?
Yes.
Can you describe the incident or where, because this doesn't reflect anything I've experienced on Water Street with any of my colleagues down in other businesses here. So I'm just curious, can you give us more details about that?
I have heard from a couple of businesses that they have had, had to have difficult conversations with patrons who weren't complying with the very clear signs about requiring masks. I, I don't know that I want to get into.
No, and that's not, that wouldn't be appropriate.
So, yes, so I've, I've had a couple of businesses reach out to me. This has happened. I've had a couple of other store owners who say, I don't want to be put in the position of asking my young staff to make these hard calls and have these hard decisions, hard, hard conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. We have several hands up. I'm going to go in the order in which I.
Darren wants to, Darren, is your?
Would that be okay, Nico, if I offer one thing really quick?
Please do.
Okay. I did, so Chief, there was one incident that did happen that a person got very belligerent and unfortunately created quite a scene, made the manager, you know, cry and it was a big deal. But, so that, I think it does happen, but it hasn't happened for a while. I think really what we're going to hear in this discussion is more of the outside versus inside, at least from what I heard. I didn't really hear a lot about the inside and I really haven't heard more than just a one or two incidents and it's been a little while. I think that was, I think people are more getting used to it. And just while I have the floor really quick, one offer, I did not talk to Daryl. Daryl's business is very unique. I, because of all the restaurants I talked to, the back of the house was the issue, but I would think that possibly one of the things we could add to this mandate would be for businesses that are unique, they could come to the select board and pitch what their problem is with having the masks inside and then the select board can decide on a case-by-case basis. I don't think you're going to have a lot of them, but that might solve the situation for unique businesses like Daryl's. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. We have quite a few people with their hands up. I'm going to go in the order in which I see them. I'm going to ask though, that if your comment is one that has already been made, if you would just keep, keep it brief so that we're not repeating the same things over and over again. But certainly we are here to listen to all of you, but we just ask that if your point's been made, just please keep your comment brief. The first hand is, is a phone number, so I'm not sure who's behind that. But if you could, we'll open it up, state your name and your address. And you're on, you're on mute?
Scott.
Hi.
Scott, Scott Lai at One Captain's Way.
Good evening.
Yeah, man, I'm, I have so much to say, but it's kind of interesting that you, you literally have, have, have guidelines for, for the public to call in, but allow the board to kind of speak freely about any point that they want to bring up, however many times they want to bring it up. I just found it and find this whole process kind of interesting and, and really the confidence you, and you as the chair, as, as the chair of the board, I, I think needs to be, needs to be looked at. But just going back to what Molly Cowan had said about, you know, what Darren had actually previously said about, nobody has, you know, spoke to any businesses, right, downtown? And then all of a sudden Darren's speaking to every business? And then all of a sudden Molly's hearing from businesses as well with regards to issues, with regards to issues of people not following, you know, mask protocols in town? So, you know, I'm going to get into, you know, really the email that I sent the board earlier, but again, please excuse me if my allotted time comes off as scripted because, well, it, it is. And it seems like the thing to do for a few of the board members present here tonight. The major difference is I won't be pontificating my political bias, nor will I pretend to have a medical or science degree because I have access to the internet and all its facts. I will also not use my time to phone a friend, Mr. Whitney, in fact. And set it up as a premeditated call as the voice of Exeter Hospital, which in fact, Russ, he is not. He is a VP of Community Outreach, which is basically somebody who does whatever the community asks. Having been, been in medical for 24 years of my career, I know that Mr. Whitney does not speak for the hospital nor this community if he does not live here. Instead, I will use the rest of my time to discuss what appears to be the systematic abuse of power by the members of this board. Select board meetings are for the community at large and yet the community doesn't seem to be fully represented by this board. Instead, it seems these meetings have digressed into more of a pulpit for certain board members to provide their personal bias based on the latest headline, Yahoo headline or Google search. I am confused as to how or why the opinions expressed by the select board members play a role in the outcome of the votes they cast. Dumbfounded, I've sat and listened to the chair of this board discuss how the town needed to validate the use of air conditioners because it could potentially perpetuate the spread of COVID-19 based on research that he had done. Is this for real? I have also listened to another select board member attempt to dictate the shutting down of, quote, "the shutting down of a business immediately," quote, over her perceived concerns. I have to ask how, how can a board member make a suggestion that could affect a business without input from the community which they are duly elected to serve? Lastly, and probably most importantly, I have continually witnessed certain board members speak over and disregard statements made by both board members, Lovey Rontree Olaf and Darrell Brown. Honestly, guys, it comes off as passive aggressive bullying at best. Board statements do not seem to be a complete and accurate representation of the voices and the individuals that make up the majority of this community and it's more clear than ever before. Keep in mind, I am not opposed to a mask ordinance. However, I have several questions with the ordinance that Mr. Murray, who Russ and Nico still dodge emails about his credentialing and how he is, has been assigned as the health officer, but I have several questions with regards to the ordinance that's put forward tonight. And I'll walk through a few of them. Did Mr. Murray author the, author the mask ordinance free and clear of input from the board? It seems as if he used mask ordinances, which he actually admitted to earlier, from Keene, Durham and Portsmouth as a backdrop as the wording used. It mirrors each of those towns to some extent. However, our town is unique both in diversity and landscape. So how is it determined that those towns' ordinance is aligned with the Town of Exeter and the needs of our citizens? Chief, you were awesome tonight and I really appreciate your input and what you and the men in blue, men and women in blue are doing for this community. And I'm going to reference the Portsmouth ordinance as it's about to go through its third, third revision and has had 19 amendments since its inception, all submitted by what seems to be a very open process with and through the community and it has not been finalized yet. You guys keep talking like these are finalized mandates and they are not. How is the board, how is the Exeter Board addressing and forming our community and getting the word out to gain community involvement? When has the idea of an ordinance been discussed outside of Julie Gilman, asking the town council with a grin on their face to look into the legality of it? What was the response from the town council? Was the response made available to the community? When has the public been notified or has a notice been sent out so that the community at large could be heard with regards to the ordinance before, before us today? At the very least, the public should be notified and invited to comment and make motions for amendments for or against if possible. Can the board show me where this has been done? Has the board consulted, Chief Pullen, which it seems like they might have done that tonight, about the cost of policing a potential ordinance and ordinance and how it could potentially affect community relations? None of you, none of you have looked into this. Has Chief Pullen spoke with other chiefs locally, nationally? And it sounds like he has. Thank you, Chief Pullen. Police Chief Robert Murner said Tuesday, Portsmouth Police Chief Robert Murner said Tuesday, during, said during Tuesday city council meeting, his department has observed about 75 to 80% of people in the downtown area complying with the resolution by wearing masks. Murner said he's been on calls with chiefs from around the country, most of whom believe the focus should be on education, not punishment. He said education has to come well before citations. It's interesting because I, I debated whether or not to send my talk tracks to you guys, but it sounds like you got them and you listened, so I appreciate James throwing in a little education slice in there in his presentation. But let's talk about education. It seems that the select board has failed to acknowledge or explore how providing proper education, wearing a, of wearing a mask would benefit our community when social distancing is not possible. Instead, it has neglected to take advantage of several opportunities over the last five months where they could have taken up discussions on setting up sanitation stations in high traffic areas like Swayze Park or the farmer's market, giving the public an opportunity to grab a mask, some hand sanitizer and, and, and mass-specific educational information at designated downtown areas. As it sits, I had to look for a, a trash receptacle downtown the other day, because I'm there every morning, board, every morning, frequenting businesses. And I had to look for a trash receptacle to throw away somebody else's mask on the ground and I had to walk two and a half blocks to find it. So what have we done from an education perspective in, in, in how that, in, in setting up that or giving the, you know, or looking at the opportunities to set up the sanitation station in high traffic areas like Swayze Park and/or the farmer's market? Given the public, giving the public an opportunity to grab a mask, some hand sanitizer and some, some, some specific information seems much more effective than a directive that is designed to penalize the good people of this community. It seems like instead of, instead of each of you has sat back and waited to approach this, only when you felt you had the legality of putting an ordinance in place worked out, which is, let's be honest, folks, the truth. There are disproportionate amount of community members that are already underserved. How does punitive damages for failure to wear a mask affect this demographic? Has the board reviewed or even considered legitimate disabilities that would prevent someone from wearing a mask? Someone with autism, who has sensory issues, for example, or someone with a respiratory problem for which a mask would make, make breathing difficult? What about those that rely on lip reading in addition to sign language in order to communicate? How is this being addressed? Police Commissioner Tom Hart said he has concerns about due process and scenarios where he, where someone refuses to provide their name for a citation stating, quote, "People are afraid of being arrested in the neighborhoods and I don't want that message out there," Hart said, close quote. If anything, quote, "If anything, we want the opposite, what's, what's, what's opposite given what's going on in this country." Chief Murner concurred by adding, quote, "Situations will arise when someone accuses an officer of citing them for being a person of color or being a young person or whatever it happens to be," close quote. We have a diverse, diverse community, especially with students returning from all parts of the world at both PEA and UNH. So is the town prepared, prepared for these unforeseen issues and how they could affect police community relations? How people will quote-unquote "report" on each other and create further divisiveness in what this will do to our community? Have any of you thought of that or any of the repercussions? Secondly, or lastly, I guess, we're going into it, who pays for the legal issues and challenges that arise? Because they will. Mayor Rick Bedt, Bedtstad of Portsmouth said he has been contacted by five lawyers who said they will bring legal charges, challenges if the mask mandate is passed. And lastly, this is not unconstitutional. You have the power as the board to pass this ordinance. That is what was missed in the challenge heard in Nashua. However, if you pass this without addressing these concerns and concerns and many others that have yet to be heard, you will be held accountable for your actions. Although you may, you may feel that because other cities are doing it, it must be okay, tread lightly. And I'll quote, I'll, I'll quote a law that many of you may not understand, which will become prevalent in the days to come. There is a legal argument around something called preemption doctrine. And if you really care, it's through the supremacy clause of the Constitution of the United States, Article Six, Section Two. The preemption doctrine refers to the idea that a higher authority of law will displace the law of a lower authority when the two authorities come into conflict. So let's just say, let's say that a state says we are in emergency and you have to wear a mask, as California did. A local government can't come along and say, forget what we, what the state said. Generally, then, an act of Congress preempts states' constitutions and an FDA ruling preempts a state court rulings and so on. Again, I am not, I'm not against the mask ordinance, I just cannot support the one you put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Next up, we have Mr. Ruffner. Mr. Ruffner, I think you're still muted. There you go.
Yeah, hey, guys, I just wanted, just to complete my thought from earlier, just as a, a citizen that lives downtown, I, I just want to reiterate that you guys are aware that, you know, for those of us that live downtown and we go for walks with our families, that, you know, downtown seems to be kind of the focal point of this, which obviously I understand it's where the businesses are and where people are congregating, but also for the people that live in these neighborhoods, that's where we go for our walks at the end of the night or in the afternoon with our kids. And so, you know, I've heard other people reference, well, in my neighborhood, you know, or in our neighborhood, obviously this is not something that's going to apply. know, or in our neighborhood, obviously, this is not something that's going to apply. So for many of us, you know, that is our neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that everybody is cognizant of the fact that, you know, any part of town is somebody's neighborhood and where they do what they do with their family and their children, and just keep that in mind. And that's the last thing I wanted to chime in on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. And next up, we have Florence Ruffner. Good evening, Ms. Ruffner.
Okay, can you hear me, Nico?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Okay, hi, thank you. I thought when I first started watching this meeting, I had specific things I wanted to bring up, and now I'm totally confused. Because from the beginning of the pandemic, the Governor's Office, they had mandates for masks. When you walked into businesses, like, we have notes on our door that when someone comes in, they have to have a mask. If they don't have it, we provide a mask, and we have a mask on. So I'm getting a little confused with what I'm hearing tonight, because I'm hearing so much about inside masks when, as far as I'm concerned, people have been following that, and I haven't seen any place that I've entered that people are not being respectful. I was thinking this meeting was about masks outside, which I was going to say, I'm sorry, but the whole route that you have on this proposal is the route I walk. And I've never had a problem with people being disrespectful, not respecting distancing. If I'm approaching someone, one of us will move, so we're at least probably 10 feet apart. So I'm not understanding what the issue is, and it's already a mandate by the Governor's Office. If you're in groups, you're supposed to wear a mask. So I don't understand why Exeter has to have any mandate, because I think people are being respectful, and I've heard Molly say that some business, and I know there was a business that they put something on social media that some person was very disrespectful to this woman, and that's not good. It's not right. And ask them to call me, I'll come give the person a mask. I'm definitely in that targeted age group. So I just find that people have been respectful. I don't know where these people are that haven't been. And if somebody could show them to me, because I know all the businesses downtown, I go in all the businesses, I go in other businesses, and I communicate with them, so I'm not understanding where the big problem is. Because I think our Governor's done a great job with this mandate, and people have observed it, and I think that's why our state numbers are very low. So I'm missing something here, and I don't know what it is. If you could please tell me what I'm missing.
Sure. And Florence, first of all, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you anytime offline, but, you know, New Hampshire is the only state in New England that does not have a statewide mask mandate. And listening to the Governor just the other day, he kind of contradicted himself as to why he's been the only governor, and that's his prerogative. He was made aware of the fact that we were having a public hearing this evening, and he encouraged Exeter to have the public meeting. And, you know, if that's what the town wanted to do, then it was within our prerogative. You know, I think that enough businesses have showed concern about not having a mask ordinance. Sure, they have signs up. For the most part, people have cooperated, but I think that it takes the onus off of the small business from having to enforce people coming into their businesses. It also allows people comfort when they're walking downtown if people do not social distance. And I've seen, and I'm downtown a lot, too, and I've seen a lot of people wearing masks when they're congested. I've seen some people who are not wearing masks. So I guess I'm trying to answer your question as thorough but as briefly as I can.
Well, I'm downtown every single day, and some people do wear masks, some don't. I always have my mask with me. If I'm too close to someone, I put it on. But I'm finding that I haven't seen anybody disrespectful, so I'm not understanding where these people are. And our business, we were deemed essential early on when the pandemic started, and we were given the mandate that we did have to wear a mask when we did showing, so we had certain guidelines we had to follow. So I'm not understanding where you're saying the Governor didn't give us a mandate because we had it for masks.
Not a statewide mask. Every other state in New England has a statewide mask ordinance.
Well, in my profession, we have an ordinance, so I don't know what the other ones are. And I'm not in the medical profession, but I'm just saying from my observation, I haven't come across anyone that's been disrespectful and has not respected other people's space and wearing a mask if necessary. So I am very opposed to saying we have to have masks on outside, because we're outside. So that's just my opinion, and I'm not in the medical profession, so I don't know. But I can't walk at night wearing a mask.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nico.
Okay, next up, we have somebody, the first name, the only name I see is Dana. Good evening, if you could identify yourself and give us your address.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well.
Dana De Niro, I am Lunachix in downtown. And there was many things I wanted to say, but I will not repeat what's already been said by Florence Scott and the gentleman, I believe, before Scott, that went on for quite a while, that I just absolutely support and love everything he said. And the Chief of Police, I have so much respect for and loved how he handled the mask ordinance and trying to do the best that the police force can do without being bullying or angering people, et cetera. So all of that has been said, and I have been in agreement with every single bit of it. And I have to challenge Molly a bit when she keeps referring to store clerks as being 15 and 16 years old. I'm not sure what stores, at least in the downtown area she's speaking about. There really aren't any, and if there are, there are so few, they're not worth mentioning. I'm proud to say I'm one of the busiest businesses in town. I've been here, I've been in business almost 19 years, and I've been here almost 16 years. And I have everything from infants to 90-year-old people, men, women, everything. I have yet, since May 11, had one problem with a mask, with anyone being upset, with anyone not wanting to wear one, or maybe asking, can I take my mask off? It's hot out. There has been such incredible respect that it flabbergasts me, to tell you the truth, how people have respected one another, respected my store as I have respected them. I think, I'm sorry, Molly, but until you sit in every store that you keep talking about and sit down for an hour or more in each store and witness, you have no right, no right, to talk about what's being said, done, and handled in stores. I haven't heard one thing, and again, I'm just repeating what Florence and the people before Florence said. There has not been any issue, and if there have been, it's such a low percentage that it's just going, it's just a power trip for anyone on this Board to try to say, now we have to wear masks on the street, or put a mask on in your store, or make someone wear a mask. This pandemic has gone on for so many months. The mental stress, the mental strain, the economics of how we have lost money in our businesses, and et cetera. I don't know what all of you do for business. I don't know how you make your paychecks, but I can tell you, if you're not in these kind of businesses that I'm in, you really need to be careful how you approach all of us downtown, how you approach all of the businesses in Exeter. We are doing an incredible job as a group, as a community, to watch one another, to keep care of one another. And as I've sat here for the last, what, two hours? It just shocks me, because what I think of is in the days when I worked for a large corporation and we'd sit in a meeting, and it ended up, who was the power-trip person? Who was the one that said, "I decided we're going to wear masks downtown"? That's, or whatever the decision was in that corporation at that time. It's not to the best of the community, it's who thinks they're right. We need to be able to smile at people, look at our children, look at our elders, and give them a smile. And I'm going to end it there, but there is no reason, and there's been no incidences in this town, and I have police officers come in my store frequently. We're all doing a great job. So let's just continue to do what we're doing well, and end it there, and stop trying to push one more thing to cause that much more stress on the residents, the retailers, and the business owners of this great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Next, we have Emily Heath.
Hi, Nico. This is Emily Heath. I'm at 10 Chestnut Street in Exeter. First of all, I want to say to the Select Board, thank you for your service over the past few months. I know tensions have been high, and you have, no matter what side of the issues you've been on, you've suffered a lot of abuse from folks. And, you know, I know no one on that Board, no matter how your voting is on a power trip, and you're public servants, and I'm sorry for the abuse that you've had to deal with. I wanted to say a few words tonight. I am in favor of the mask ordinance, and I think more people are in favor of it than perhaps we know. I, in my day job, am the pastor of the Congregational Church downtown. I'm not speaking for the church, I'm just speaking out of my experiences of pastoring there. We've had to do a lot since this started. We've canceled in-person worship, we've suspended in-person gatherings. When we had a gathering on Easter morning on Swayze Parkway, we had to cancel that because we didn't want to hurt our neighbors, even though we would have been wearing masks and keeping social distance. We've had to sacrifice, and we are a very diverse community in terms of political views and beliefs, but folks have wanted to do this because it's the right thing. Now, as a citizen of Exeter, I'm hopeful Exeter is the same kind of place. I think right now, it would show a lot if people knew our community was on the same page. I'm glad others have not seen disrespect for people wearing masks, but I have. I've had, you know, the church is right in the middle of downtown. We have folks that use our grounds, who are walking on our grounds all the time. I have asked folks to practice some common sense social distancing, and I have done that very politely, not aggressively, just, hey, you know, we've got some immune-compromised folks who work here. And I have received a lot of pushback. Now, would I call the police? Would that be my first response? No. But it would be nice to say that this is what we, as a community, have decided. Now, I'm not going to get into medical or scientific issues, I don't claim to be a doctor or a scientist, but the CDC and Exeter Hospital have already said, I think they're the folks we should be listening to here. And I'm not going to speak for businesses. I think the only people who should be doing that are the folks that have spoken tonight, the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Director. But I will say, as someone who shops quite a bit in town and tries to keep my money as local as possible, that I would sure feel safer knowing that we had this mandate. And I think people who are taking this epidemic seriously would see this as a place where they could safely come and support our local economy. More importantly, that we're a community, taking care of one another, listening to science, loving our neighbor by keeping them safe, that's who we should be. Citizenship is not just about your rights, it's also about your responsibilities. It requires some degree of service to one another. Communities require standards, especially around health and safety. And when folks look back, and they'll look back at this pandemic years from now, maybe they can see that Exeter did the right thing out of mutual care and concern. I'll end with this, I've heard some people talk about medical exemptions for folks with respiratory problems, saying we can't wear masks. I've had asthma, and pretty bad asthma, my entire life. It's interesting to me that my entire life, I was told when air quality is bad, when there's a risk of infection, the first thing I should do is wear a mask. So to now hear people using that as an excuse, saying, well, people with asthma, you know, they can't do this. You know, please don't speak for folks like me, because that just doesn't make sense. It's not what we've been told our whole life. I think that if we look at science and we look at the facts, we find that a mask is a very small price to pay. I both live and work downtown, I'm glad to wear one. I'd sure love to know that others who believe the same, you know, can be safe in our town. And that's all I will say at this time. Again, thank you all for the work you're doing.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Next, we have Bob McHenry. Bob, are you there? Dan, do you still see Bob?
Yes, there was a minor issue with his version.
Hello? Hi, Bob, we can see you here, you know.
Oh, oh, hi. Good evening, how are you folks?
Good evening.
I know you're in for a long night, and I just want to make a couple of comments. I think I have a, maybe a slightly different perspective that I'd like to share, and that is, I believe that, you know, clearly what we're talking about is local ordinance, and it seems to me that if we're going to pass a local ordinance affecting our citizens, we should be, the main criteria should be what's going on locally. And I think it's worth noting, and no one seems to be acknowledging, that while this has been a terrible epidemic, and there's been a lot of suffering, we are clearly on a good path right now. You might look at cases and say, there's still a huge number of cases, but there's also a lot more testing going on. But you could also, I think if you look at hospitalizations in our state, and I'm not a medical person, but we're down to, this week, we're down to 12 people in the hospital in the entire state of 1.4 million people. And that trend carries through in the entire region, New England, including New York. We're in a definite downward path. We're doing a great job due to social distancing and wearing of masks. I totally believe in it. I do it all the time when I'm at work, when I'm in any business or any of the places we're talking about, possibly with this exception of outdoors. But I think it's worth acknowledging that this is a wonderful town, and people are doing the right thing. And I just feel they don't need to be told that if they don't do something like this, they'll be penalized with fines and the threat of a summons to court, because Exeter's made up, I've lived here for 22 years, I live on Water Street, failed to mention that. I've been here 22 years, I've worked here for 37 years, I love the town, and it's just made up of great people. There may be a few outliers that we're discussing here and there, but to pass an ordinance of this nature at this point in time, when we're definitely trending in a good way with this whole epidemic, seems to me, the timing seems to be a little bit off. And just a couple of other things I want to mention real quick. If we were to enact this, it's going to happen about the time that the PEA kids come home, come back to school, rather. Now, we're following the protocols, sort of, we're trying to, of some of the college towns, and I understand the corollary, but these kids come from all over the world, they're wonderful kids, they're what make, part of what makes Exeter such a wonderful place. And to me, it seems like the timing to suddenly the kids are back, the academy is taking all kinds of precautions, clearly, you can tell what's going on on campus, to address the issues that might come about when they return to school. Everyone that lives here knows that those kids are the best behaved, they fit into the community in an amazing way, they always say thank you when you pause to let them cross the sidewalks, the academy does a great job with these kids. There's no reason to think, as it's been suggested in the past... There's no reason to think, as it's been suggested in the past, that they will just ignore the rules, they'll run rampant, they won't wear masks, they'll travel in big groups. That's just so out of character for PEA kids. So I don't think that should be a criteria that factors into this. And, and finally, I just want to say that I liked it, I like what the chief said, because if the purpose of a law or an ordinance that has penalties is just to educate, why don't we just focus on education? Let's throw some signs up. Let's have some, I don't want to deputize people, which was mentioned, to be deputy health officers, but if you want to have those same folks just walk about and, and make sure that people are aware, and maybe offer the mask if they don't have one, have some signage here and there, I think that will achieve the goals that we're after without having to threaten people with fines or court summons. That's all. I think we've, we've all got the right intentions. We all want the same thing. I think it's just a matter of how we approach it and keep our community cohesive and, and the wonderful town that it's, that I love, and that it's always been. And that's my piece. Thank you so much for listening. You guys have a lot of hard work. I really appreciate your efforts.
Bob, thank you very much. Next, we have Anne Sermon. Anne, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, can you hear me? My name is Anne Sermon from 14 Cullen Way. Can you hear me?
Good evening, Anne. Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. I'll be brief, because most of it has been said. Really quickly, I think at the end of the day, it's two things. One, it is a public health issue. I just want to bring everybody back to that. The whole notion of a mask ordinance is public health, and that's what needs to be looked at. Inside or outside, the notion is to be six to 10 feet away from the person. So the notion that there's a difference doesn't really hold any water. If you're outside and you're not six feet from the person, you need to wear a mask. I mean, these are just things that people, they know, but they're sort of forgetting as we get into this. I don't believe it's a police matter at all. I think what the chief said was right on target. I do think there's, there has to be some level of enforcement, but even back to what Mrs. Ruffner said, she is actually correct. The, the businesses were certainly given the guidelines from the state. People that do facials and, and real estate and restaurants, everything opened back up again. Absolutely, the governor and the state did give guidelines. So she's following them, and she's completely accurate, and so is Ms. De Niro down at her store and the other places. So they're right. And I'd like to think people would do the right thing, and I think they are doing the right thing, but it never hurts to just have that extra overarching thing, going back to what Ms. Cowan said. The businesses have the signs that say, mask required, mask required. So they do need to enforce their own rules, but it certainly would help to have, it would have helped best if the governor had just said overarching to the state. And failing that, he's left it to the towns, which puts you in a tough spot. And you have suffered a lot of abuse tonight, and I applaud your, keeping your heads up doing this. But at the end of the day, it really, I think your discussion tonight does come down to, not a police matter, yes, a public health issue, and, and just figure out the best way to enforce it, is the main thing. But I do think we need one, and I think it's going to help the businesses, not hurt them. And I really appreciate your time, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sermon. And we are going to get to everybody that has their hand up, but I want to reiterate from the beginning, I've made it clear, selectwoman Cowan made it clear, you know, we are not looking to write tickets here. This, this is not what we're trying to accomplish. It's about public health. It's about helping businesses. It's not about writing tickets. And part of the public hearing is hearing from the public. That's why we have the public hearing. So we are listening to what you're saying. We are listening to every idea that you're giving us, and then we're going to bring it back as a board. So I just, I really feel that it's important to say that. Ms. Tyner, good evening.
Thank you, Nico. Well, I guess I come back to when the board needs proposals to make a decision, or the town needs to pass something like this, there should be a specific objective. There are a specific problem we're trying to solve, and that's kind of what I'm struggling with, because there are so many problems caused by the pandemic. If you look at the Maine Sunday Telegram yesterday, you know, the shadow pandemic, the 49% increase in domestic violence, and there are real problems out there. But when I come to this, because the state of New Hampshire has had rules in place, which other people have talked to, I think those rules have largely been successful. And what I have not heard anyone point out is there was actually a mistake in the minutes from, I don't know if it was a mistake in the minutes or a mistake in a statement at the last meeting, but it basically, it said that the pandemic is growing in New Hampshire, and I think that probably should be corrected in last meeting's minutes. Because if you check the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services stats that are publicly available to everyone, we went from a high of 2,290 cases statewide in mid-May to the current low of 250. We went from a high of 126 hospitalizations statewide on 13 May to the current low of 12. So that's a 90% decrease, and I think that shows that, that shows success in current policies. So I'm still confused as to why we aren't focusing on the real pain and suffering. We had someone, the earlier public comment brought up, that there are people really struggling in our communities, and I would like to know what we're doing for them. But if we are going to pass this unnecessary thing, I think you need to make sure it's right. I totally agree with the education piece. There are definitely pros of wearing masks, so I'm not opposed to that, but there are also cons, and it needs to be clear and objective, and the education needs to talk about both. So there definitely are medical issues with people wearing masks. Every legal mandate in the United States has a medical exception, and if these pleadings are not in compliance with the American Disabilities, American Whatever Disabilities Act, and HIPAA, and things like that, they, they are illegal, because the board or the town cannot presume to override a medical doctor, and if they do, you're liable for that. So I think the town needs to watch itself and make sure you're not doing something illegal, and make sure you're in step with those federal legislations. I absolutely agree with listening to the experts. Someone else brought this up. There was someone who was a strategic planner for the hospital, was brought on as an expert, but then when somebody called in, who was a medical doctor, who I wasn't familiar with, and I just kind of Googled the name, and saw that he was a senior medical researcher specialist, and, and so when someone volunteers like that, let's bring them in and use their expertise, because in these meetings, that's the first person I've heard that's a medical expert come forward in a public setting. I've heard a lot of them behind the scenes privately, pretty much all say the same thing. But I, I think if we're going to listen to the experts, let's listen to these real experts, these medical research scientists, medical clinicians, and those folks. If we're going to cite the CDC and the WHO, that's great. I agree. But let's make sure we get what they say right, because none of those places talks about having to wear masks outside, walking down the street. I mean, if you're in, obviously, it's, it's out there. If you're in a, you know, a protest, you know, whether it's a Trump rally or Black Lives Matter protest, I don't care whether it's for, you know, Who Loves Horton and Here's a Who, whatever it's for, there's a bunch of people together. That's a different situation, which is, again, already addressed by the state. But walking down the street outside is what all of the experts tell us we should be doing. Breathing, breathing in the air, breathing deep, getting oxygen, building your immune system, taking in all those particles of the air. That's, that's what it's about, and we can't say we're in line with CDC and WHO otherwise. And I think the one thing on the WHO, if we're going to cite that, they did update their website, updated their guidance in June, and the WHO, WHO, World Health Organization, now is calling for one meter, not, it's no longer two meters or six feet. It's actually one meter for their guidance, and their statement on masks, I want to read it, so it's a direct quote, is, "At the present time," this is a quote, "At the present time, the widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not yet supported by high-quality or direct scientific evidence, and there are potential benefits and harms to consider." So, again, I'm not opposed to something, but if we're going to write it, let's be in line with, with the law, the federal law that we're bound by. Let's not do something that's redundant with New Hampshire law that's already out there, or New Hampshire executive orders. And if we're citing something, let's make sure we're citing it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyner. Bill Campbell.
And good to be here tonight, and I have my sympathies. Go out to you people. I'm glad I'm on this side of the screen. I'll try and be quick. We live in a wonderful community. Several people have already attested to that. And I think when we make this kind of law, we're not making it for the 90% of the community. We're making it for maybe the 5% or 10% that doesn't seem to be in step with the rest of the people here. Because I, I agree that we're doing a pretty good job. I'm in that category that has to be very careful about exposing, or being exposed to the virus. I was in a store today, in which most, everybody had a mask, but I went around the corner of one aisle, and there was a man without one. It's kind of scared me, because there he was. I don't know if he tested, whether he was good, but he, he didn't have one, and he was, didn't seem, seemed kind of proud that he didn't. So I got a little concerned about that. We must, I think we're doing, as I said, we think we're doing well, but we still, I think, need to do better. We don't have our schools open yet, and that's one of the things that I really think is important. And maybe if we do use this law, that we'll, we can get down to the point where we can really open schools and other places like that. The ordinance, I believe, has a limit, and I think we should try it for whatever it is, 60 days, or whatever you decide. But I think it's worth giving it a try, because I think there are a lot of people who agree that masks are important, and I think we need to get this, the community to pull together this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, moving on, we have Emmanuel Papadakis.
Hello.
Hello, Emmanuel. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Just state your name and address for us, please.
Emmanuel Papadakis. I live in Northampton, New Hampshire, but I own Supreme Pizza and Seafood in Exeter.
Before we, before we go further, we just need to, because you're not an Exeter resident, we just need to get a consensus from the board. Does anyone on the board have an issue with Emmanuel speaking? Sing on, go ahead, Emmanuel.
Okay, I just want to say a couple of things about the mask. We wear masks here at Supreme anyways inside. We were the first to have the plexiglass installed by the counter, you know, hand sanitizing, all that. But we do not wear it 24/7, because it's impossible in the kitchen to wear it. I mean, you're in front of a 600-degree oven. On a busy night, you have two and three ovens going. You're in front of 1,800 degrees. So I don't have a problem wearing the mask, and neither does my staff, but it's not something that is on 24/7. And I don't think it should be like a fine if a customer walks in and says, hey, you're not wearing a mask. Well, I took it down so I could breathe. I mean...
You, you make a good point, and we actually spoke of this earlier when Mr. Winham was speaking, and that is something that we were going to add to the language for particularly cases like that in restaurants where the kitchen is very hot. So we, we understand your point.
Okay. That's the only thing I wanted to make. I understand that it's, it's a difficult subject. We have, I don't care if people wear a mask or not. I prefer that they do, but there's other people that don't want to wear the mask. They don't believe in the mask. And you, you know, somebody comes in and says, hey, I don't have a mask. I said, no problem. We have plexiglass. We have distance. It's fine. But, you know, other people will be combative. So if you make it mandatory, I think you guys have to know that, like, and what are we supposed to do? You know, put the phone girl and say, hey, you have to wear a mask, or we can't serve you? I don't want it to be like that. My opinion is if they want to wear the mask, they can wear the mask or not. Leave it a choice. So those are my two points. Working in the kitchen, it's very hot. It's very hot, and it's very difficult to always have the mask on. So, thank you for your time, and I just want to throw that out to you guys. You guys are having a difficult night, so I wish you guys all the best.
Thank you very much for your comments.
All right.
Apologies for that. Carl Wickstrom.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes. Good evening, Carl.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak to some things that have already been said, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to reiterate some of the good, good things that they said. I did send an email that addressed all the wherethes in this ordinance, and it seems that we are picking and choosing which, which WHO recommendation we use and which CDC recommendation we use. I just want to point out that social distancing is considered the best way, and masks are to be used whenever social distancing isn't possible. And when people are walking outside, social distancing is possible. And I addressed that in the email. I hope that all of you get a chance to read it. The other item, if I can remember now, it's been so long, I've been sitting here waiting, is, is that, oh, and the, the issue with walking is not a cardio, cardio activity. For me, walking is a cardio activity. It's the only cardio activity I ever get, much except for playing tennis. And to say that walking is not a cardio activity, and therefore not, not a, an exemption, is, I feel like that's an arbitrary distinction, because people who walk the long distances do eventually get their cardio going, and, and that, running is not an option for me, because my joints will give out if I try to run for very long. So I just want you to consider that in the language as well. Other than that, I think other people have expressed good problems that are, that are in this language. And particularly want to point out what the police chief said, and realize that we are, we, if we're 80% or 90% complying with the social distancing and the, and the masks, then that has the same effect as, as being an artificial, an artificial herd immunity. Because if you get 80% of herd immunity, that is, 80% of the people cannot transmit the disease, then the disease dies off and does not continue to flourish. So we don't have to have everybody complying for it to be working. That's one reason that the incidence in New Hampshire has been dropping. The number of active cases today are the same as where they were back on March 27th. And so, so I think this is unnecessary, and I think it's going to create a possibility of confrontation with people telling on people and calling the police, because they see somebody, and you end up having a confrontation that escalates, and it's just not necessary for us to be putting people, then the police, or anybody else, whether it be a health officer or the police, in a situation where they have to be confrontational with people. That's, that's all I have to say on that. But I would, would appreciate it if all of you would take a look at my email, where I address all of these wherethes. There's 18 wherethes in this document, and that's a lot of wherethes to try and justify this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Mr. Drewin, is that you again? Trying to remember the...
Yes, yes, it is. David Drewin, 27th and a staff. Thank you, guys, for hearing and attempting your best to keep an open mind to these opposing viewpoints tonight amidst, you know, what is a total cloud of uncertainty. I'd like to just be brief here. I know you guys are getting a lot of different perspectives thrown at you, but I'd like to first off, give kudos to Chief Poole. I come from a family of military, I'm police officers in our neighboring communities of Amesbury and Merrimack, just over in Massachusetts, and I have a great respect for the law enforcement and what they have to go through, and Chief Poole's take on enforcement, in particular, of such an ordinance, particularly in regards to outside, I think was 100% right on. In my own experience, I already thought there was an ordinance to wear masks inside and outside. to wear masks inside of all businesses. That's why I have been. And I believe I can quote Chief Poole in saying they've received zero phone calls about anyone putting up a huge stink about wearing a mask inside. Pretty sure that's what he said. Secondly, I can't imagine someone like doing yoga in a field or like an elderly gentleman going for a walk and getting, I don't know, the police called on him or a deputized health officer called on them for not wearing a mask completely alone outside. I think that violates a number of my own moral ideals. But it also directly contradicts the CDC's recommendation. And I quote, "That people wear masks in public settings when, around people who don't live in your household, especially when socially distant measures are difficult to maintain." So I mean, I just kind of say, I echo with Florence and everyone else with that. Like, when you start making it outside, people like, you know, ratting each other out over like who's wearing a mask outside, even when they're by themselves taking a walk. It's like now we're starting to tread down a real dangerous path where the ramifications have yet to unfold. And that, you know, was mirrored directly by our chief of police here in town. And that leads me to my main point is I'd like to give some serious credit to the citizens of Exeter, who I've personally witnessed already following wonderful socially distanced guidelines, great mask-wearing indoor. As I said, I already thought we were all wearing masks indoors. I wasn't even aware that there was people not wearing masks indoors. If I saw that, I'd be scared too. Those people should be asked to leave, for sure. I don't think it's escalated to the point where anyone's called the police, according to Chief Poole. So there's been great successes in our current policy. And I'd like to give credit to the citizens of Exeter for just using common sense. And that's why our caseload is like one of the lowest in the nation in regards to COVID. Then, my last point is like Daryl's business, the Salt Cave, like Emmanuel who called in, who said like sometimes they just can't breathe back there. 1,800-degree ovens. Clearly, there are circumstances in these businesses, unique or not, that have not been mentioned, thought of thoroughly, or worked into the ordinance that is drafted now. The ordinance that everyone has drafted right now does not include all of these special or unique or even common sense circumstances. So how could we possibly mandate something that is, in a certain way, the intentions are right, but in other obvious ways, just not thoughtful enough? Not enough thought has gone into them to be mandated. So I mean, I agree and have sympathy. And I wear my mask whenever I go in, anywhere. But if I'm going to take a walk with my family out in a field or I want to watch my daughter ride her bike around the parking lot on a 100-degree day by herself with me watching her, should I be afraid my neighbors are going to call the cops because there's a seven-year-old without a mask by herself with her dad? Or a deputized health worker? I don't know. And then in regard to the last person who thought they want schools to reopen and maybe more ordinances and masks would help schools get back open, I don't believe, as my wife being a teacher here in town, that is the reason why schools aren't opening. I truly believe that reason to be that we live in New England and there is going to be a serious conflation of cold and flu symptoms with COVID symptoms come fall and early winter. That has the potential to overwhelm, confuse, and kind of flood our local hospital here to the point where, you know, duress, mass confusion, reshut downs without preparations for remote learning happen. And a lot of these things feel very common sense to me, wearing a mask inside. Yeah, of course you should. And if you don't, yeah, you should be asked to leave. If it gets too crazy when someone gets asked to leave, you should call the cops. According to Chief Poole, and that hasn't happened yet. So I just want to give the credit to the beautiful citizens of Exeter. And for, I feel like we're in a nice, safe community here. And I love raising my family here. And I just want to give that credit. I don't think an ordinance at this point would be a step forward. I think it would be discrediting the progress of current policy and current common sense that we have here in what is like a nice, pretty highly educated town. And thanks for listening to all these opposing viewpoints, everyone on the board there. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drewin. And I have a commitment to call on every person that has their hand up. But Mr. Drewin brought up a good point. And it's something we spoke of earlier. We have taken into consideration the restaurants. In fact, we discussed that pretty thoroughly before we opened it up to the public. So that has been recognized and dealt with. Additionally, you know, I would just ask if you're going to comment on the ordinance that we comment on the proposed draft. And nowhere that I've seen, and I've read it several times, has it indicated that masks need to be worn when you're alone outside doing yoga, riding your bike in a parking lot. It simply suggests using a face covering and a mask when you're out in public and you cannot social distance. In fact, I'm looking at number seven, "Members of the public utilizing public recreational lands are strongly encouraged but not required to wear face covering over their nose and mouth to the fullest extent practical, especially when coming into contact with others where social and physical distancing of at least six feet may not be possible." So we are not suggesting, at the least, that people always wear a mask outside. It's when they cannot safely socially distance. So I would just ask, moving forward, if we stick to what's in the ordinance or any other suggestions that you may have. I have a phone number. Who's next in line? If you could just state your name and address, please?
Hey, Nico, it's Scott Bly. I won't cut his way again.
Mr. Bly, I'm going to make, I promise you...
No, I'm sorry, Nico, you're not going to cut me off because other people have already spoke twice. And this is what you do. You're trying to control the narrative. And I'm not going to allow it. So what I'm asking is that you actually not interrupt or comment on public opinion or public comments because that's not your place. This is a public meeting. There are citizens of this community that are calling in and having things to say. And you're responding to them. Floris Ruffner had a great point. And you're literally going tit for tat and arguing with her. So the point of this meeting, Nico, and I'll remind you because it's more apparent than ever that you're on a power trip and you want to control these meetings. And what I said earlier, I'll stand by, you know, the neglect that the other select board members, Daryl Brown and Lavi Ronfro. Sorry, Molly. Molly, you're the secondary piece of this, okay? So no. And how are you off of mute unless Nico has taken you off of mute? So Nico, so you need to let the public speak. And then you guys can have your talk as a board and vote on it. You don't need to interject or offer comments or justify your position or argue points of all things that are the internet. It doesn't make sense. And it's not what your role is here in this community. You have a year left. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bly. Next, we have Hillary Justice.
Hi, am I unmuted?
No, you're fine. Good evening, Hillary.
Hi, my name is Hillary Justice. I live at 38 Cross Road in Exeter. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who has made constructive comments this evening. It's been very enlightening. I would like to point out that what we're talking about is something that can kill us. And being a scholar, not a medical person, I just want to point out that these times are not necessarily as unprecedented as people seem to believe. In the flu pandemic of 1918 to 1920, the union leader reported 2,700 deaths in New Hampshire. In 1918 alone, 102 people in Exeter died. The deaths in the state of New Hampshire currently stand at 429. People are arguing that education is more effective than a directive. This was true then as well. Yes, it is true that New Hampshire is doing better than the surrounding states. But I would point out that the surrounding states have mask orders. And one of the reasons that New Hampshire is doing so well is that we literally live within a moat of other states that have mask orders. We don't. Someone earlier who spoke said that the main criterion should be what's going on locally and that things are trending good. I point out that in the town of Exeter, things are not trending good. Between August 11th and August 19th, Exeter's active cases stood between 1 and 4. But we cannot get it to 0. Between the 19th and the 22nd, which is the last date for which I have data, they've gone up by one case per day. Existential, exponential math is real. For comparison, yes, the average number of active cases in New Hampshire per day is now where it was in March. Guidelines have changed. Peer-reviewed studies take time. I would also like to point out that what New Hampshire does have for people, not industries, are guidelines. And these guidelines are rife with ambiguity. The Exeter Town Mask Ordinance would remove some of that ambiguity at a time when we're about to have 1,000 teenagers from all over the world, all of whom we would like to protect, are going to come back to town. As an educator with a quarter-century experience, I can tell you that teenagers are experts in finding loopholes. If there is an adverb, they will exploit it. So wearing a mask outdoors where social distancing isn't possible is really ambiguous. And I think our community would be a lot safer. And the kids who are about to come join our community, although they are wonderful kids, they're teenagers. That's a little ambiguous for them to follow. I would love to give them more credit than that. And they will grow up to be incredibly responsible human beings. But at the moment, their brains aren't wired the way adults' brains are. I also hate to point out that nationally, education institutions with incredibly responsible administrators, incredibly active faculty members have tried their best to institute rules and guidelines to bring their students back to their campuses safely. And not a day goes by but what another college or boarding school has shut down and sent their kids home because the cases are rising exponentially. I hate to remind everyone this, but we are fighting a battle against an enemy. And it is not each other, it's a virus. There is no vaccine. There is no cure. Whether or not you get it is luck. Whether or not you die from it is luck. The only prevention tool that we have is hand sanitizer, masks, and social distancing. What's the threshold it's going to take for some people who object to wearing masks to put one on? I don't know. How many people have to die? I suspect it's one. I suspect it's one person close to them. The CDC guidelines and the WHO guidelines are clear. They just say that there aren't peer-reviewed studies yet. Peer-reviewed studies take months. This virus is less than a year old. If you follow the medical research yourself, you know that transmission is primarily aerosol that takes place wherever air circulates, where people are too close together. And they're not taking the basic preventative step that we all know is masks. Finally, I would hate to see our community divided. But this conversation is doing that. I'm hearing a lot of wishful thinking. And I'm hearing a lot of ad hominem attacks. And I have to thank the select board for their patience and professionalism in the face of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Hillary. Okay, next we have up, and I apologize if I mispronounce your first name. It looks like Raina Ellis.
Actually, before that, Mr. Chair, we have one.
Go ahead.
Linda Brown, who has been having technical issues and just managed to get her hand raised.
Oh, absolutely. Good evening, Linda.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly. Could you just state your full name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Linda Brown. And I'm actually advocating on behalf of my mom, who is a resident of Exeter and Hayes Park.
Okay, do you live in Exeter, Linda?
I do not, but my mom does.
Okay. Just, I just have to ask the board quickly. Does anybody object to Linda speaking on behalf of her mom? Seeing none, go ahead, Linda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. My mom is a senior there in Exeter. And I can tell all this craziness. One of the things that she enjoys the most is taking walks in her development and occasionally a walk downtown. But it's a place that I definitely think brings a lot of peace and happiness. And, you know, at a time when there's less joy, I'd like to see her be able to keep that. So recently, I saw in the paper, this little small little blurb, I do think, just an opinion that there needs to be better advertising, especially something as important as this. Because I did get on the website and I saw emergency mask mandate. So when I did that, I thought, there must be something different going on in Exeter. So I did a little bit of research. And I ended up on the New Hampshire G O F E R R site, website. And, you know, for people to go to to get the latest. And what I found was for today, 8/24, what I found was Hampton Falls, zero cases. Kensington, zero cases. Epping, one to four, we'll call it two, Stratum, two. And then Exeter, seven. So when we run that off, we have less than 10. So in the town of Exeter, of 14,300 residents, so 13,993 in the Exeter and the surrounding area have not had, there are no cases. So for 10 or less people, we want to require masks. And I listened to Carl Winkstrum. And he talked about how, you know, cardio, walking is cardio for him. It's the same for my mom. And then I definitely have been listening for hours here. I listened to Dana. I like what she had to say. She talked about how, you know, it's important to be social, to smile at people, to look at our children, to, you know, give them a smile. And I'm really afraid that that's what we're losing in our communities when we're, you know, the only place that we can really be social now is outside or even inside. We know how to social distance. We know how to, you know, wash our hands. We know what to do. So why would we require masks outside? And why would we want to ever lose that? So again, just a concern with the fact that there are only 10 cases in Exeter in the surrounding areas that we would ever require this. And then I did one other thing that I saw that was published. Again, I'm just trying to stick with facts that I found. And what I found with August 12, on the CDC had published 331 million in the US population, 0.05 mortality rate, which means you have a chance of surviving, is 99.95% recovering. So I'm just gonna maybe just leave it at that. And I'm hoping that my mom can continue to walk in her neighborhood and of areas and see people's expressions. And, you know, because I just think that we're losing, we're forgetting about the social piece of it. You know, these seniors have been locked up in their homes. I mean, because they're such high risk. They're finally just getting out to socialize with people. And everybody's got a mask on. And you cannot see people when you don't have a mask on, when you can see their expressions. And we're losing that. We're losing that as a society. So that's all I have to say. And again, I'm going to stick with the facts. And I didn't understand why it said emergency mask mandate when you have seven in Exeter and you have a total of 10 and all this around, a total of 10 in the surrounding areas. I just, it didn't make sense to me why we would be doing this at this time, at a later time, at a later time, if the numbers are there maybe, for 10 people. It just doesn't make sense. And yes, that's all I have to say. And I think you all for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, Raina Ellis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, Nico. Yep, you pronounced it great. Thank you. My name is Raina Ellis. I'm at 1 Brentwood Road in Exeter. I had no intention of calling in tonight. I had no intention of calling in tonight, and I ended up just listening, and I just want to say I'm truly objective in this debate. I have really good friends on both sides of this issue, and I love Exeter more than ever after having listened to all these really thoughtful dialogues. I found myself going back and forth between the different sides of the argument, but where I landed about probably 10 or 15 minutes ago is it sounds like we're trying to solve a problem with an ordinance that won't be solved with an ordinance, because no one wants to issue tickets, and everyone agrees that being respectful and strict on education is the best approach, and, and I agree with that. I generally feel like if you can solve a problem without having a rule or a law, then you should try to do it that way, and, and not rely on a mandate, instead rely on what it sounds like a lot of people in, in Exeter and even visitors to Exeter are already doing. If education is the priority, then I think we should focus on the education. So in general, I think people should wear masks inside. I think you should wear a mask when you can't socially distance. I think it's respectful and kind and putting other people's health in front of your own desires. I heard somebody say something amazing, which is that being a citizen doesn't mean just, I wish I could, I could paraphrase it better, but it, it was about having a responsibility and not just rights, and I thought that really hit the nail on the head. So I do think that we need to be respectful of people, respectful of the previous caller's mother. I want her to be able to walk around without having to wear a mask, and as long as I'm six or eight feet away from her, I want to let her. There are always going to be bad actors who are disrespectful with or without the ordinance, so we're going to have some nasty people like Bill Campbell, I think it was, that mentioned, the guy in the grocery store who's not just wearing, not a mask, but also seemed proud of it. Those people are just going to be like that. I don't think having an ordinance is going to fix them. I really do like what the police chief said. I agree with him that they're going to get calls, both anonymous and not. I hate the idea of ratting people out that are walking around, and, and I think there's going to be a lot of misconceptions about this ordinance and what it's trying to accomplish. So very, lastly, sorry I talked a little long, but lastly, I really want to take exception to the speaker who commented so disrespectfully about teenagers, as if they're loophole finders and rule breakers and irresponsible. These teenagers have been working in our restaurants, they've been the store clerks that, that, that Ms. Cowan is trying to protect, they're bagging our groceries, they're dealing with the crappiest situation any of us could have imagined for them in the past five months. I think that was a terrible misrepresentation of our teenagers. And in closing, I'd just like to commend the articulate heartfelt callers, Bob McHenry, Robin Triner, Bill Campbell, David Druans, the people I listened to tonight made me love Exeter more than ever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have a phone number. If you could just identify yourself and your address for the record, please. Hello?
Hey, guys. Scott Ruffner again, just real quick. I just wanted to follow up on the, the piece about Mark Whitney from Exeter Hospital, and I had a long conversation with him as far as his representation of where he was coming from, speaking for Exeter Hospital as a public relations person. And so he definitely had a lot of confusion about where he was fitting in to where, you know, he was sort of advocating in this whole thing. And so I just want to put it in context for a lot of the people that may be listening later, that Mark is also a big advocate for fall sports in the fall and, and doing outdoor activities, you know, for children in high schools and junior highs. And so, you know, I, I think if you had him call in again, now that he's got a little bit of a better perspective, I think you might get a little bit of a different input. And I also reached out to Kevin Callahan, the CEO of Exeter Hospital, you know, that there's just, you know, there's some contradictory things here with sports, where, you know, let's get sports back happening, but arts events in the park are a little different, and we just really need to find a common ground for all of these events, so that whatever we're talking about, whatever we're permitting, whatever we're mandating, there's a consistency here, because we all know, I'm an assistant softball coach all summer, a lot of you guys have been coaches, we've all been there, you know, no one's following these rules and regulations, no one's social distancing, no one's wearing masks. So if we're going to have these conversations, let's be consistent and let's do it right. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. We have two more hands up, and then we'll close the public hearing. We have Sheri is up next. Sheri, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
There we go. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi. Sheri Gusta, 24 Woodridge Lane in Exeter. Unfortunately, I missed a lot of the meeting. I didn't get to hear Chief Poole speak. I've heard maybe the last six or seven people. You know, there's some misinformation that's been spoken about a mortality rate at 0.1%, which is absolutely false, 3%. You know, there's misinformation everywhere, but really what's concerning to me is I see people without masks indoors in Exeter quite often, not in the grocery store in Hanaford, because there's a, you know, they require it now, which is, which is really great. But I was at the Alltown Gas Station last week and watched 10 people walk in with no mask, and I had to go into the convenience store because the, something had happened with the machine, and I didn't want to go in there. I was wearing a mask, but I knew all of those people that were in there were not, and that's a really small store with poor circulation, and the people who are working in there should not have to have their lives at risk, because these people don't want to wear a mask. I think Mr. Campbell had said earlier, you know, the ordinance really is for the 10% or 15% of people who just do not want to be respectful citizens and protect our fellow citizens and won't wear a mask. It's not for the 85, 90% of us who are doing those things. So I think it's very important to have a mask indoors. It's going to, it's just going to give people peace of mind, and it's going to also help everyone stay healthy. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thanks.
Next, we have Daniel Cook.
Hi, Daniel Cook, Daniel Cook for Bonnie Drive. I've listened to, I think, 95% of the meeting. I just wanted to say thank you to all the, the board members, and I want to say that, or I want to remind the community that every one of these board members volunteered for this position to represent the community. Part of that is to take scrutiny and feedback that will not agree with what they're saying. Number two, I think that the reasoning that you're trying to use this, that I heard in the beginning, was because other states are doing this, is completely wrong. If we want to do it, it should be because our community has decided that this is the best option for us, and that the fact that I heard about 12 people in the state are hospitalized out of 1.6 million and 1.8 million is just, it sounds really good, and it sounds like we're making smart, intelligent choices as a community. And I just find it really strange that at this moment in time, right before school opens up at Phillips Exeter, that now all of a sudden we have to vote on an ordinance. And I, I don't think, based on what the chief, the chief of police has said, that this is a, something that we should, we should have our neighbors calling on each other. I just really don't agree with that sentiment, and I think that the town should really weigh the opinions of the people that they represent and make it a recommendation and not a law. So make it about education of how to prevent this disease and make it a campaign on that, not make it, hey neighbor, call the, call the police on this, or call the, the health official on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I said we were going to close the public hearing, but there were two hands that were flickering back and forth, so we'll have Kathleen Wickstrom go first, Robin, because you've spoken, and then we'll close it with Robin Tyner, and then the public hearing will close. So, good evening, Kathleen.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay. I just wanted to make a last suggestion that all the select members take to heart the, what, what the police chief had to say. He spoke a long time ago now, so I don't want anyone to forget about, but he made some really good points, and I don't know why we want Exeter policemen having to have unnecessary confrontational interactions with citizens. It's not good for anyone, not good for the police, and, you know, you really have to have a good reason to do that, and it's something that in general, I, I would prefer fewer interactions that can possibly lead to very bad consequences, and the enforcement on this is going to be a nightmare. I, I hope, I hope you all vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. And then last, before we close the public hearing, Robin Tyner?
Yes, and I'll be real quick, because I appreciate, there are some people who just expressed things beautifully with about the smiles and Raina's comments, and I hope I say the name right. And, and I just appreciate hearing those as well. The, the one thing that concerns me is, for anyone throwing out statistics out there, I think it's important that they need to cite the source. You know, I, we hear the mortality rate of disease, you can go to the CDC website, you know, according to them, if that's the source we believe in, 0.26% mortality. So that's a quarter of a percent. So when you're hearing these things, if someone's saying it, I hope that you're citing a source and verifying a source, and verifying that it's an authentic source, an appropriate source, and I think that's, I'll just leave it there, but I do appreciate letting everybody speak, and, and I heard some lovely people tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay. Now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board. Select woman Roundtree Olaf, since I can't see you, I'll start with you first.
It's a lot to process, so I'm.
I can come back to you.
I don't have a quick, yeah, come back to me, because I don't have a quick answer for you just as yet.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
Mr. Chair, that's just as well, because we actually have to move to.
That's right. So I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Select woman Cowan. Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. It's unanimous, the public hearing is closed. So if any of the Board would like to show a hand, if you wish to speak. Select woman Gilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to first explain what, that I did not expect to take a vote tonight, because of the, you know, we already heard at previous meetings that the idea of a mandate or an ordinance or, or something was going to be controversial, so we know it's going to take more than one night, so I was not expecting to take a vote tonight, and, and will abstain if that's what goes forward, but, and the reason for that is because, as we saw, so many people lining up to give us an opinion or a suggestion, that's what we need. We want to hear, this is what we're presenting, here's the draft, there are things that, you know, there's disagreement, there's an agreement on things. I, I myself have struggled with the, the enforcement part of it, the whole time we've been talking about, you know, first mentioned this. I don't want to put it on the police either. I've looked at other, what other towns have done, and they have said they will put on fines, but they don't say how, they don't say how they're going to manage it. Other ones have just said, wear a mask outside. Talking about a few things in response to what other people that called in have said, I find it interesting sometimes that when we cite particular, particular instances like other towns or other states, that depending on what side of an argument you can make, you can cite those same places for the reverse reasoning. I, I don't want to go into any particular one. I've been watching the stats on the state's DHHS site, and, you know, today's data is, you know, seven current cases in, in Exeter. Their seven day rolling average of cases is actually starting to go up, again, as it was at our last meeting. I think one of the purposes that we were talking about, outdoor mask wearing was, and we did concentrate it on the areas that have sidewalks that are not wide enough for two people to really social distance unless they come from the same household or family. And so that was my interpretation of it. I don't, it is a tough one. It's a tough one to say thou shalt not be outside with a mask, without a mask. But if you think about it, people like to watch the river, if there was one, which there isn't right now, you know, standing on the bridge and somebody wants to cross the bridge, well, do they have to step out into the street? What we're trying to, that's why we want to have this, or that's why I want to have this outdoor mask area, in defined areas where you don't have access to more space. It happened to me on String Bridge, you know, came up across someone who's going to step into the road, and we both chose to turn around and go back the other way, and then it happened again, and somebody chose to go across the street and walk where there is no sidewalk. So we, you know, we're trying to make, or I'm trying to make, make it safe, you know, if people are reading this complaining about we can't use, and we can't ask everyone in town to wear a mask because there are some medical conditions that make it difficult or just impossible, it's in there. It's, it's the same language that the governor uses, the same language that the CDC uses, that if you, if you can't wear a mask, you're not forced to. The person that's talked about their elderly parent, I can totally empathize with that. My mother's been in the county nursing homes, and they've been locked down since February, and it's been very successful. They have blessed the employees who are taking care of them and taking care of themselves to keep the infection out of there. But that being said, when we opened it up for, opened it up for outdoor visits, we could actually sit over six feet away and see my mother in person, the next, and then following week, two cases of employees came in and that shut down, so I still can't go see my mother, I can't give her a hug, I can't do anything. So since February, she's been indoors. So I, and that's my personal thing, and I would like to be protected from others, because I want to get to that point where I can see my mother, and the other residents in there and their families are struggling also. And there's so many reasons to think about doing this, and there's so many reasons, you know, we've heard both sides, and, and I can agree with some, you know, the question about distancing outside, you're out in a field, fine, don't wear a mask, but if you're walking around downtown, I will, I will step in front of your car, or somebody's car to avoid you, and that's my choice. What else do I have? I think that, again, like I said, I'm not prepared to make a vote on this, I think we have a few things to work out, but I do want to ask to, for people who comment, as we are respectful to you, that please be respectful to us. There are some claims made. There are some claims made that we're not doing our job properly, and that we are not representing, or just making our own opinion and doing, you know, what we want to do and not what anybody else wants to do. And I find that really shameful as a representative of our, of our town in general, that this is what the, how our residents explain themselves or present themselves. I like to think of our town as a community that gets along. That's why I'm troubled with the, even calling it a mandate, but the enforcement issue, because we are a community that should get along. And I think bringing up, just being angry and not, and not productive, or not offering solutions, solutions are being offered, this is good, but just being angry and taking it out on whoever's in front of you, I think is unfortunate. And I just wanted to say that when, I really objected to being called out that we are not treating each select person equally. And that I find very troubling, if that's the interpretation of how we proceed here. So with that, Mr. Chair, I, for right now, that's, that's what I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Select woman Gilman. And just to be clear, when we spoke at the last meeting, we didn't definitively say that we were taking a vote. We simply suggested that, under the RSA that council had given us, we had the ability, after public hearing, after a full public hearing, we had the ability to take a vote tonight. And that's up for discussion. So if there is a motion made later from a board member, obviously, it would need a second and a vote. But we didn't determine on the tent that we were absolutely going to take a vote. I think, you know, hearing what we heard tonight might give some of us pause to continue the discussion. I still strongly believe, as I voted back in June, that we should be wearing masks. From where I stand, it's, it's a simple thing. It's public health. And the five of us were elected to represent this community. We were elected to try to preserve health and safety as best we can. We have the PEA students coming back. We don't know when school is going to start. We hear of a surge. We don't know when that's going to be. And I think that the intent was to look at how we can continue to preserve public health and help our businesses. Our businesses certainly expressed interest in at least having this discussion. So regarding a vote tonight, that was never anything that we definitively agreed we were going to do. I think, you know, there may be one or two people that want to vote, but certainly, we are a board of five people, and we heard a lot of testimony tonight. We've also received a lot of emails, both for and against and in between, and a lot of them with very good ideas. So I think as a board, we need to continue conversation, you know, obviously, like to hear what the other select board members have to say. But in terms of a vote, if a motion is made, we will entertain it. If a motion is not made, it's something that we can continue to discuss. And that would be up to the entire board to vote on.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, perhaps this was a procedural error that we made, because if you look at what was, what was provided to us, the recommendation, and again, this is made by, recommendation by someone that doesn't necessarily know our procedures. It says after, at the very end, it says, before we sign it, after one public hearing. And we opened our discussion as a public hearing, and, and I want to say, perhaps that wasn't the right process for this. We should have just had the meeting with the input. So that's, that's where I'm coming from, as far as not being able to vote. It's just what was presented. And this is what, and this is what the public saw, and I'm sure that caused some of the alarms, that it looked like we were going to definitely vote tonight.
That's a very fair point.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Please, and then I'd like to bring it back to the board.
Fair thing. No, I just, I just wanted to clarify on the, on the top of the ordinance. This is, this is a unique ordinance under our unique statute, and that's why. I mean, I think, I think from my perspective, sitting and listening, certainly, it's within the board's purview if you want to take a vote or not take a vote on it tonight. I just wanted to reiterate that, that, you know, the direction we got something up, Mr. Murray did his best with what he knew, and put something in front of you as, you know, as was asked for. And I just wanted to make that point about that RSA, because it is unique. It is not, this is a public health ordinance under that specific statute. That's why the one, the one public hearing, it only requires one public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, I'll look for a hand. Who wants to speak next? Anybody?
I can't find my hand, but...
Hi, Selectman Brown.
I just, I appreciate all the wide spectrum of comments. I think there was a lot of passion and perspectives in there. So just to frame it, I don't have a lot to say about it all, but it is, I appreciate Selectwoman Gilman's ability to sort of process all that. I just want to take it all in and hopefully, over the next few days, use it to sort of aggregate a sense of where, where all the different communities in the town are at. Sort of in the interviews, at the start of the meeting, what my question was getting at with the economic diversity, sort of looking at all the different swaths of town as we move into this. And, yeah, really, it's, I appreciate having opened up this discussion, and there'll be a lot to unpack in the next few days.
Thank you. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye, Chair. Thanks, Nico. So I'll keep this brief. My opinions are pretty similar to what they were before, when we spoke two weeks ago, in that I think an indoor mask, whether we call it an ordinance, whether we call it a strong suggestion, is imperative to keeping our town safe. But I'm still trying to discern what level of outdoor mask wearing is appropriate. And also, you know, like Chief Pooleen said, I don't want this to become a, people calling up the police because they feel like somebody is five feet distance with or without a mask. And, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work through that, and I do appreciate all the comments that we've gotten from, the letters that we've received from people in town. And I do think that some more time is needed to just go through those fully and, and clearly, so that everyone gets the time that, you know, they put in, so that we can process all of that information fairly and make a recommendation that I think is best for our town. Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this is an important thing, and, and I think lots of emotions are involved, and I just want to make sure that we do the best thing that we can for our citizens. And, and, you know, whether PEA is coming back or not, I think a lot of this just has to do with our own town, period, because I'm less concerned about PEA being back in session than I am about what's going on for residents in town.
Can you say that one more time?
Thank you.
Can you repeat that, Lovey?
Like all of it? Which part? Oh, I was like, that's a lot, Daryl. No, I said, I'm, for me, I am less concerned. I think whatever decisions we make are made based off of Exeter residents, not necessarily because PEA is coming back in session. I think the plan that PEA has in place for their students is independent of the plans that we need to make for our citizens. That's my personal opinion, but I know that that's not what everyone else feels. So I just put it out there, that I'd rather focus on what our businesses are doing, what we expected people within certain areas of town, and make the decisions based off of that, not necessarily based off of PEA students returning in a couple of weeks.
Got it. Thank you. Great, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you to everybody who called in with very, you know, it's clear that this is a, this is an issue that we're thinking about very, very thoughtfully and, and thoroughly. So I'm really glad that we're having this decision. I have a couple of questions for our police chief, who, I don't know if he has the ability to speak, but I, I know that he is, oh, he's just come off mute, so I think he can. But I, I just want to ask you, Chief Pooleen, where you stand on actually in, in putting in place a mask ordinance?
Okay, so I guess I'll clarify that. My purpose of speaking earlier was for the enforcement piece. We're not anti-mask, but what we need to do is, and what I did is outline some examples of what enforcement by a police officer would look like, and give you all that kind of insight, or maybe that wide lens to see what it is they may be dealing with, and what could, could, what the outcome could be with that interaction. So we're just seeking clarification from the board and from the community on what that enforcement would look like, should you decide to choose the police to enforce this. Ordinances can be enforced by a civilian. Our animal control officer, for example, is a civilian who writes summonses under our ordinances. So don't feel that. It has to be a sworn officer.
Okay, that's really helpful to hear, because it did sound like you were, you were opposed to the whole mask ordinance in general. But it sounds like what we, no, so that you're, you're not opposed.
Right.
Okay, that's really helpful. And what I would like is to take some time and be really thoughtful with you, with your input, with the input from your officers, and with James Murray, about what an enforcement policy looks like that, that we can all be comfortable with. Because I agree with Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf. I think that this is, this is a community issue, and we need to address it, because this pandemic is not going away. We are not able to go to school in person. We are not able to, to hug our family members, and there is real pain and suffering in this community. And what I am really wanting to avoid is an economic shutdown, because people refuse to socially distance or, or wear masks. And so that is what I'm hearing from our businesses. That is what I'm hearing from our parents. That is what I'm hearing from our teachers. And so we need to, as a community, come together, figure this out, because we are, we do not have leadership from the top of our country. We do not leadership, have leadership from this, from the elected leader in this, in the state, and so we need to do this as a community. So I am 100% in favor of hearing from the community. It is, this is a long meeting. This is now three and a half hours of time that we're spending on a Monday night, which I appreciate. This is what we were elected to do by the people in this community. And you know what? I am so, I am, I am really sad and, and sort of horrified at the, at the perception of the board in the community. And what needs to happen, which would actually be helpful in moving us forward, is for, for you to contact us, because I can't address all of the complaints that are lobbed at me in a public forum without having the meeting go another two hours, because I want to hear a dialogue of, of what the perception is. That goes for members of the board, too. I want to hear from you. You know, we have rules about 91A, and we can't all talk, but we can, we can all be friends, and we can, we can communicate with each other. So if that needs to happen a little bit more, too, like that, that needs to happen, because while we are going to, I hope, be wearing masks in public, not because we're mandating, not because we're mandating it, because we all, as a community, know that it's the right thing to do. We can still see each other on Zoom and smile at each other, and I think that that is a really important thing.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like the consensus of the board, including me, are not prepared to vote on anything tonight regarding this. We only have another week before our next meeting, which is the 31st. Would the board be more comfortable taking this back up on the 13th?
I would rather take it up next week. We're going to, I mean, we've heard from the moderator that we, that he's going to be requiring masks in, in voting, but we are going to be there. We're all going to be there. We're going to be exposed to people in the public, and I would rather deal with this or not, or just, you know, decide definitively next week. We have a meeting scheduled. We have our next steps that we need to take up with Chief Pooleen, James Murray, the rest of our board. We can do this, folks. We can do this, friends. We can take care of our community.
Other thoughts and comments from board members?
We just need to make a decision, so I say next meeting, and vote, and be done.
I, I agree, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
I'm fine with next meeting.
Okay. So, Mr. Dean, we'll have that back on the agenda. And I want to thank everybody for their time and their patience this evening, and thank everybody for their comments. This is what a public hearing is for. Okay, next, we have, and a couple of these discussion items, we can get through rather quickly, because we're just voting on things that we held. Next, Mr. Dean, we have the Chamber of Commerce lease renewal of lower level of Town Hall.
Yes. So we have had a lease in, in place now for, going on year, we're in year three, and it's about to expire. And the Chamber of Commerce has notified us that they would like to renew for another 12 months. So that's what this agenda item is about. The lease is in the packet. As you see, they have sent a letter along indicating they would like to extend the lease for 12 months, under the current terms, which is an annual rent of $6,000 per year, and it defines the lease space and so forth. There is a, there is a, there are a couple of suggestions by the chamber as far as the lease itself. One is on the termination provision. It says the lessor may terminate this lease with 30 days' notice to the lesssee in the event of an unplanned urgent need for the space. And they propose a change to allow both the lessor and/or the lesssee to, the option to terminate the lease with 30 days' notice. I didn't have a problem with that. I don't know how the board feels about it, whether you feel strongly one way or the other about that. The other provision is, when the chamber first leased the space back in 2017, they did some improvements to the space. Those have been completed, so the proposal would be to take that out of a revised lease going forward. So those are the changes.
Okay. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the suggested changes, but that last paragraph, where they talked about the renovations that they did, product, the question in my mind about the judge's bench and the other piece of furniture, that's a fixture basically of that area, and maybe instead of that last language where it talks about those remaining, we should have a line about those remaining if there is a end of the lease, you know. I'm not explaining myself very well, but that the judge's bench and bar are property of Exeter, not to be moved out.
So noted.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Do we have a sense of what the fair market value of that space would be?
Mr. Dean?
If we leased it to a private entity?
Yes, yep.
I don't off the top of my head. I mean, I can get that. We, we did talk a little bit about that the last time we went through this exercise. So I'd have to, I'd have to get that number for you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, my, my, my plan was to hear what you had to say this week, and then bring you, you know, a final version next week.
Why don't we, why don't we table this then, and you can get the answer to Selectman Brown's question?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. And we can, we'll revisit this on the 31st then. Okay, next, Department of Public Works Director Jennifer Perry. Jennifer, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
No, thank you. Thank you for allowing me. I'll try and make it as brief as possible. As you know, I've been providing you with updates almost every meeting for the last two months, as far as our water resources go. And just last Thursday, the drought monitor issued a severe drought status for southeastern New Hampshire. So we have now been elevated from moderate drought to severe drought. moderate drought to severe drought. And our own experience here in Exeter has been concerning. The Exeter River is very low. It's actually the lowest that we've ever observed at the intake at the river pump station. And I know we did receive a good, I think it was six tenths of an inch of rain yesterday with the storms that passed through, but overall, we're still at about a nine-inch rainfall deficit for this year. And the predictions are that the hot weather is going to continue through at least the month of October. I don't try to look too much further than that. So above normal heat conditions. Rainfall, it is showing, and I think we're starting to experience some rainfall, which is great, very, very much needed. But even though we've been on a level one, excuse me, a level two restriction here in Exeter, as far as our water use, we've been on, on what we call the odd even, every other day watering. If you're an odd-numbered house, you water on an odd day outside. We have seen that the water consumption continues to go up. We're back up to about 1.2 million gallons per day. And so in order to conserve the water that is remaining in the Exeter River and continue to conserve the groundwater, all of which are public waters, they're not just for the town of Exeter. We feel it's important that we go to level four condition as far as restrictions, and that is an outright outside watering ban. We did have to go to this once before in, during the 2016 drought. We were in a total water ban, I believe, for about eight months in 2016 and into 2017. So we have had to do this before. And the outdoor ban does, it, it's for all landscape watering. It does not cover people watering vegetable gardens, farmers, livestock, things of that nature. But if it's a garden, like a flower garden or a lawn area, it's more of a, it's not as, as important, obviously, as preserving our water supply for drinking and for vegetables. And so no outdoor cars washing. You can continue to use a you know, a car wash, per se, but not personal washing, not washing down driveways, not washing down houses, things of that nature. And this goes beyond just people who are on the town of Exeter water supply. It also does extend to people with private wells. Because it is, again, it's a public water supply. We're all sharing groundwater. And it's really important that we're conserving the water. So that's our recommendation, to go to the level four outdoor watering ban at this point in time. And I think I covered most everything in the memo. If anybody had questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to do my best to answer.
Thank you, Jennifer. My recollection was, was around this time several years ago, correct? It was, it was around August, and it went into the winter, did it not?
Yes, it was August 30th, 2016. And it was carried through the winter, and it wasn't until May of 2017 that we did go off the, the mandatory restriction.
Okay. And we can, we certainly would revisit this periodically, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, it, that particular season was a little bit different. It was basically the, the drought had started the prior season. And this year, it didn't start until May. And it was just, it's like the, the rain spigot has been turned off since May. Now we're starting to get a little bit of precipitation, but it does take a long time to recover that nine-inch deficit, which we're in right now.
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments for Director Perry? Okay. Seeing none, I entertain a motion for the select board to implement level water, level four water restrictions to conserve and maintain adequate reserves of the public water supply. Level four restrictions prohibit landscape watering. Removed. A second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Uh, okay, yes. Selectwoman Cowan. Selectman Brown. Selectwoman Love, Roundtree Olaf. Lovey, you're muted. Can you? Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
I vote aye. Passage unanimously.
All right, what is our effective date, Mr. Chair?
I believe it's one week. Is that correct, Director Perry?
Actually, it's three biz, at least three business days, but we also want to post this in the Exeter newsletter. So it would, it would either be that Friday or Monday. But we want to do it as quickly as possible, because it is supposed to continue to be pretty warm. But we'll certainly get this out there and continue to push this.
Will folks find this on our website, Mr. Dean, and also Director Perry, if we have any social media for DPW, if we could put that out there as well?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have to circle back to the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment vote. We had three public readings. Madam Clerk, do we need to read it again, or could we just entertain a motion?
I believe if, we should ask for comments, and if there are no comments, then we can go ahead and.
Let's look for a public comment. And we'll pause for a moment. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on this before we vote, this is the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment. We've had three public readings. And I see no hands up. Bring it back to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to amend Chapter 9, Section 910(c) of the Exeter Town Ordinances to delete C. Gilman Park off Bell Avenue.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dean.
Did, uh, I'm sorry, did the extra part also get read, the new section? Because you're deleting Gilman Park off Bell Avenue, but you're also adding a new Section 910.1 about the ball field.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. Yeah, I, I got it. I withdraw my motion, and, and Mr. Brown, if you'd withdraw your second, we can. Okay, so I move to amend Section 910 of Chapter 9 in the Exeter Town Ordinances to delete 910 Part C. Gilman Park off, off Bell Avenue, and to add Section 910.1. Dogs are prohibited from fenced-in ball field confines at the Gilman Park baseball field. Dogs are also prohibited from the Gilman Park pavilion. This prohibition shall encompass the entire playing fields and pavilion at each location, and shall be in effect on a year-round basis, 24 hours per day.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we are back to a motion that we need to make. This is regarding the Tennis Court Repairs Parks Improvement Fund. Mr. Bisson presented this to us July 27th. Is he with us tonight?
I am, Nico.
Mr. Bisson, you've already presented this, but since we have the full board and public still listening, if you could give us a summary of this, and we'll make a motion for you.
Oh, thank you. So as the memo states, we're experiencing high cracking last winters. Mild winter did not help things. The, the site is pretty unstable. So what we would recommend is to fill in the cracks and continue to fill in the cracks, so the courts remain usable. We have seen courts all over New England that will experience this and eventually become uninhabitable until we have to replace it. So by doing this procedure, it is the Right Way Crack System. It's a, a new technology that waterproofs the crack that will actually give it a little more warranty than your typical crack filling. And it is an investment, because that's something I don't think we want to do right away, is rebuild the tennis courts as we did in 2003 for $250,000.
Thank you. Any questions for Greg? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $10,628,000 out of the Parks Improvement Fund to contract Vermont Tennis for crack repair.
Removed.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. And next, we spoke twice. Mr. Sharples received an invitation to join the New England Municipal Sustainability Network, NEMS. As part of the invitation, the select board has to authorize Mr. Dean to sign a letter. And again, we've tabled this twice, so I would look for a motion to authorize Mr. Dean to sign the letter authorizing Mr. Sharples to accept the invitation from New England Municipal Sustainability, Sustainability Network.
Removed. It's really exciting.
Well, second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Passes unanimously, so Mr. Dean, you'll sign that letter. Congratulations again, Mr. Sharples.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for hanging in there with us tonight.
No problem.
Okay, next, we have the COVID-19 update. We will hear from town staff, but I think first, Mr. Dean, if you, Melissa and/or James could give us an update from the last meeting regarding the farmer's market audit that Mr. Murray was going to conduct.
Sure, there's a memo in the packet, and it is from Mr. Bisson with Melissa and James. So James, are you with us still?
Yes.
Yes, he is. Hi, James.
There he is. All right, why don't you unmute, and you and Greg can take it away.
Okay, we were able to go down to the farmer's market, not this last Thursday, the Thursday before. I'm just trying to find the memo in the packet here. Just a moment.
James, I have it up if you want me. So I'll, I'll take, I'll take this away, and then James, I'll let James come back in. So the three of us conducted an audit. But well, let's back it up. After our last meeting, we actually met with both the farmer's market on Tuesday, August 11th, and Wednesday, August 12th, along with a board member of theirs, Dorianne, who was filling in as temporary market manager, and Seth, their new market manager. And then we conducted an audit. We went down and walked at approximately 2:30 PM. And we counted 86 patrons socially distancing and wearing face coverings. The, the vendors did an outstanding job. We did make some suggestions, and you'll see in the, in the packet, the modifications, increased signage, location, to put an isolation area in case a vendor did become ill, and we didn't want to cause a traffic accident. And documentation. The park is open to the public. So one of the things that we wanted to reiterate to them was, if they had any of those interactions with the people that are not wanting to follow the regulations, that they should document it to us. And Seth is to email James Weekly and kind of give him updates. I went back down again at 4:30, and approximately 56 people there. So obviously, the attendance is not great, because it was a beautiful day. And again, they, all social distancing, I mean, they marked up the parkway pretty well with some sidewalk chalk, so people could actually understand there was a flow to it. There's six feet social distancing markings for every vendor. So all in all, we are very pleased with them, and they're very receptive. They understand that they are doing their due diligence to try to keep everything up there. But these, this is happening all over the seacoast for all the farmer's markets. They're, they're really trying to work with all the municipalities to meet restrictions and guidelines, and we were pleased with it.
Just to add to that, if I may, I can definitely see where the perception is from the front of the parkway, that there is no social distancing, because from the front of the parkway, when we first arrived, it, it looked like a mess, to be honest. Once you start walking down, you notice the chalk lines. You see everyone is six feet apart. And we were able to confirm that, but from the front of the parkway, it does look really congested. So I think perception might be a bit of an issue for them. And that's where in our recommendations, we recommend they move it back behind the crosswalk down there, just to help fix that perception a little bit as well.
And James, do you plan to have any follow-up audit to ensure the signing and, and the signage, and also that they move back?
Yes, I'll be able to follow up at the farmer's market, and Seth, the market manager, will be giving me reports every week.
Okay.
That will be helpful as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Please.
Yeah, but what exactly do you mean by perception versus actuality?
So, like, from the front of the parkway?
What's the perception that it's crowded versus it actually being crowded?
When we were at the front of the parkway, looking in?
Yeah.
In some instances, in front of the stands or the stalls, sorry, it appears that people are huddled together. Once we moved down the parkway, you could see the lines spaced apart. They were six feet apart, but.
But in that actual front area, were there, was there crowding?
There was no crowding, no. As you look down the parkway, I guess I should have said, it, it appears to be crowded in front of some of the stalls, but once you walk down and getting a closer look at it, there was six feet social distancing. There were chalk lines in place.
I guess I'm not visually understanding, because I, from what I saw, you know, I guess what visually seemed like crowding was actually crowding, but I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Uh, that may have been the case. When we went down, I didn't see that, that, it appeared that there was crowding from the front of the parkway, but as we actually walked down and inspected the different stalls, you know, from the side view.
No, I, I understand that. So what's, what's the recommendation versus just pushing it back? What's the recommendation so that at the start of the actual market, there isn't crowding?
So pushing it back behind?
You know, like, there's a cluster in the beginning of it, and perhaps a cluster, you know, not throughout, but what can be done to alleviate that cluster at the start of it?
So our recommendation to push back behind the crosswalk would allow for less of a bottleneck if that was to happen. There'd be more open space between the entrance of the park and the start of the market.
I'm, thank you so much for, for your investigation of this. It sounds like it was a good resolution, and I would encourage you just to keep checking in to making, to make sure that we're being safe in our town.
Absolutely.
James, can we ask you to come back on the 31st, just to confirm that they've, they've taken your suggestions, and also just doing another audit is probably a good idea?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the farmer's market? Okay. Well, I have you, James and Greg, do you have any other COVID updates?
We concluded our Care Kids program last Friday with a ice cream social, socially distancing ice cream social, I should say. And it was a huge success, the families were really appreciative. And I just want to give you a quick update when you approved fall sports. Fall sports, the registrations are coming in slow, and it's not just us. Just want to give everyone a heads up that extra use soccer as well as experiencing lower numbers. And then there is actually a competitive flag football league in the Seacoast that is experiencing low numbers as well. So people are interested, but they, I think they're still waiting to see what schools are really going to do.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Wilking?
Well, good evening. I just want to, I just want to thank you all for all your time tonight, listening. And I just want to make sure you realize that the fight about fully supports the use of masks as well. I know you'd asked Chief Poole, and whether you ultimately vote for an ordinance or keep it as highly recommended, we will attempt to be role models and set the example and continue with masks. We are, as you know, on the front lines, we're seeing patients daily, not always with COVID-related issues, but our employees wear masks, and we remind them regularly when we don't. My hat's off to you. I want to take a few seconds tonight to go over some statistics. Julie started, and perhaps we've been kind of going too quickly because it's been getting too late, and you hear some, as you hear tonight, some stats being skewed. But since the start of tracking COVID-positive individuals, Exeter has had 39 residents, and it's evidenced on WMUR, and I get briefed weekly from DHHS as the Emergency Management Director. So 39 is the number. And what I said two weeks ago, I still stand behind, we had 30 cases in the first 23 weeks of this pandemic, and I'm counting the first week of March, when Hampshire experienced its very first case through the end of July. We then had five cases in Exeter for the first two weeks of August, and we had four in the past two weeks. So we've had nine positive cases in the last month, and 30 in the previous 23. So I'm not an alarmist, I'm not trying to be an alarmist, but a lot of comments are made tonight, and I heard you, Mr. Chair, talk about the possibility of a surge later. All science predicting that, but we'll see if that bears out or not. But I'm only here to tell you what, you know, what has happened in the state, the statistics are going. Our fatalities in Hampshire remain steady, 10 every two weeks, and there's been two in Rockingham County every two weeks over the past month. So it's not going away, it's not getting terribly worse. But again, you've got a difficult decision to make, and I want to make sure you realize that I'm going to do everything I can to support James Murray. He's very hot on this ordinance, very difficult position to go in. I think he tried hard to pull the very best parts of very good ordinance with other communities to serve the citizens of Exeter. So I know you'll take it up next week, and I'll be here, and I'll support you on that decision, whichever way you go. With that, our PPE is doing fine. I worked with Paul Scofidi, and I'm looking forward to the elections. Fiery MS has never really taken an active role in our elections, and we're going to be there this year. We're going to help with crowd monitoring, with the crowd movement, if you will, because we won't be in the polling area. We'll be assessing the general health, and we'll be there to assist anybody who might not feel well after being in line for a long time. So we look forward to assisting Paul and the kind of Exeter assistance at the election, both primary and the general election in November. The last point I just want to quickly point out, as you probably heard the news, an Exeter property made the, made the, at least the local news, there was some alleged hockey players at the rinks. James was on it and investigated, we kept everybody in the loop. We then brought in the Attorney General's Office, DHHS, for that, and they continued to investigate and kept us informed. And I, James can chime in if he wants, but it's our, it's our belief now that the owners and operators of the rinks, as well as some outside leagues are well in compliance as we sit today with the governor's ruling on outside leagues and teams playing in Exeter. And once it came to our attention, we acted pretty quickly on that to make sure that all parties knew what's going on. But we believe we're on the right track there.
Terrific. Thank you.
Can I just jump in here?
Please.
Thanks, Chief Wilking, thanks for all you do. Glad to hear that you all feel very prepared with PPE for the election. That makes me feel a little bit safer, and, and, you know, certainly safe for the residents of our town. And I'll tap you as well to work with Chief Poole for some recommendations about what we'll do with the mask ordinance.
Oh, absolutely. We're here to support James. I'll share with you just one concern I had listening tonight. Currently, James is scheduled to work eight-hour days and does not live close to Exeter. So any solution we have as far as enforcement, Fiery MS will help. You know, I read the handover one, but you know, we are not trained in, certainly empathy, and we can, we can educate, there's no issue there at all. But you know, we're not trained in issuing citations or warrants, but we'll support James, and I'll absolutely be in the mix and work with Chief Poole. My job is to support you in whichever decision you make. So, and I look forward to doing that.
Thank you both.
Any other questions for Chief Wilking? Great. Thank you, Chief.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Okay, Mr. Dean?
So my items are, we were noticed by the CARES Act Election Assistance Fund, Assistance Fund, that we were eligible for up to $37,694.95. And so I was hopeful to get a motion from the board to accept that amount in CARES Act Election Assistance Funds. What we would do is we would match those funds with 20% of our own money. So, you know, the basic spending on that would be a little bit north of $43,000. But we're already going to spend that on the state primary and the general, but this will allow us to tap into those funds that have been set aside for us by the Secretary of State.
Well, that's good news. Any, any questions for Mr. Dean on this? So, Mr. Dean, perhaps to motion that the select board accept the CARES Act Election Assistance Funds in an amount up to, could you repeat that amount? The amount of $37,694.95 and authorize the town manager to execute any documents necessary to obtain these funds?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Yes.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Dean, yep.
The other items I just wanted to make the board aware of were the, there is, as I think most of the board members know, there's a new executive order dealing with, dealing with face coverings for scheduled gatherings of 100 or more individuals. So that is in the packet this week for you to look over. And then there was another emergency order that was issued recently that had to do with penalties and enforcement, as we've been talking about enforcement tonight, as far as the, it says specifically, "Any business organization, entity, property owner, facility owner, organizer, individual that recklessly violates any emergency order rule regulation issued under the state of emergency shall be subject to civil penalties of up to $1,000 for each violation, or day that a violation continues." So I know this came out of some of the things that were happening in the state and, and even locally in the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to call the board's attention to this order. One of the questions that we have is, again, when it talks about enforcement, it does say specifically in here, "The Division of Public Health working through its staff or local health officers shall take necessary enforcement actions for violations of the emergency orders, including imposing civil penalties or immediately closing an event, activity, business entity, organization, facility, or property." So, you know, from our perspective, that is a good example of where the state's relationship with the local health officers comes out, because you see basically, even though Mr. Murray's our local health officer, he's appointed by the commissioner, actually, ultimately. So that's, that's the relationship there. So I just wanted to call the board's attention to that, and we're continuing to look at that order and the enforcement piece.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I just had the question, he's appointed by, didn't we just appoint the health officer? But how does the commissioner, how does that relationship go?
So the board, the board actually makes the local, your appointment is local, but it's a recommendation that goes to the state, and the state commissioner of Health and Human Services has to approve it.
God, is that, did that happen between when we just, so we had a...
That was a few, I think it was about a month ago that the board...
On the 27th is when we voted.
Did that, yeah.
And since then, the DHHS commissioner has appointed him?
It's, it's a form that they sign up at the state, I can double check on that, but I'm pretty confident that it went through.
Thanks.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, I've gotten confirmation from the state that it has gone through, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Any other questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, moving into regular business, we do not have any tax abatements, credits, or exemptions this evening. We do not have any permits and approvals this evening. So, Mr. Dean, if you have anything further in the town manager's office?
No, I don't, just, no, I'm all set.
Okay, all right. Select Board Committee reports, I'll start with you, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
No updates. There's a meeting scheduled for Wednesday for the housing, I mean, sorry, the Swayze Parkway.
Okay, great, thank you. Selectman Brown?
Facilities Committee walked through the public safety complex last week, was very informative, lots of equipment and property that needs to be upgraded, but through walk through police, I missed fires. I think I'll catch up with Deputy Chief about that later. Communications Committee was rescheduled to tomorrow, and I missed the subcommittee about the pocket park with Renee Allen, so I'll be catching up with her this week. That's it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Sorry, my cursor finger doesn't always work so well. I, we had, I had a Heritage Commission meeting, where you also discussed the pocket park that Renee Allen is proposing. A little bit of discussion on the Ioka, but there's really nothing for the Heritage Commission to discuss. And then we're going on the Winter Street Cemetery flagpole that Greg Bisson had asked about. We just want to hear the type of material and the cost, so, because it was, because you want to know the cost. Otherwise, we have no problem with changing, we just want to know what it is. The HDC had an application for some repairs and basically just window replacements. Very good presentation, people are taking the application, the new applications that we work so hard on, people are starting to take them seriously. So when they come in and present a project to us, we don't have to ask them 20 questions, and they don't have to come back to answer those questions. So we were done with these folks in, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes, and they were done, ready to go. But we had a presentation also from the academy, because they want to move the Dow House barn, the yellow-ish house, Victorian house on Front Street, they want to move it back further to join in with a new dormitory, new dormitory facility that they're talking about. So really, our purview was only the barn, but of course, we got to talking about the new architecture in front of us too, because three of us are architects. And I went to college with one of the guys that designed the building, so it was too tempting. And, yeah, and I, but I just wanted to point out, the facilities director is making this point, presenting this project to others, that adding new dormitory rooms is not, they're not doing that in order to add more students and increase the student body. They're doing it because ADA changes and school changes requiring, you know, square footage per student are changing, and given this, what they have right now, they need to increase, they need to have increased beds available, but for less, for the same number of students that makes any sense. They need more room for the same people they have. And that is it.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I think I actually had two planning board meetings. I had one last week that you were there for an hour for me, and then the one, the week before, I had another planning board meeting. We did, we are closer to a decision on the Gateway Project, which is really exciting, and I believe that you voted on the Osrim-Sylvania one. So if you could give that update, that would be helpful.
Yes, the Osrim-Sylvania Project, I sat in for you, and that was just a lot reallocation, and it was pretty standard, voted unanimously. The presentation took about 20 minutes. And did you have any other?
No.
No? Okay. I did not have any Sustainability Committee cancel the August meeting, and I believe we're scheduled for next Tuesday. So correspondence, we can go through this somewhat quickly, but the first one, we talked about the last time we met on August 10th.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't see it.
I just wanted, while we were on committee reports, the Communication Committee would really come in handy with this whole discussion about our mask ordinance, and it's about, you know, how we communicate with the wider world. We've had all that information from the CDC and the state's DHHS links on our website for a long time, so they're, they're there, but maybe we need to do, you know, more, like, more direct pushout, I guess. So I don't know which one of you is on the Communication Committee.
Selectman Brown? And you meet, Selectman Brown, you said you meet Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry, okay, great. We received a letter from the Swayze Park trustees on August 7th, and we spoke about this briefly at our meeting on the 10th. They conducted a sidewalk, and Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, you gave us a summary of that sidewalk, you were there. After some discussion, the trustees came to an agreement that they would recommend to the board to keep the roadway closed until November 1st of 2020. As the board knows, we've, the last time we voted was to keep it closed through this month, I believe, or through Labor Day. But the trustees are recommending through November 1st, and they're also asking the board to consider closing the road annually from at least April 1st through November 30th, and longer if possible. If not possible, they're asking the board to consider voting to make the road one-way for that time period. The trustees support the closing, and they believe that it has enhanced the use of the parkway during this time, and has brought more enjoyment to the people who have been able to use it. Mr. Dean, it's my understanding that you reached out to Town Council regarding closing it for that time period, April through November, and Council opined on that?
Yes, they did. And one of the, one of the issues that we are dealing with is the fact we've got a Class 5 road there, and it's a public way, and that the public actually has a right to access the road. So keeping it closed for that amount of time really doesn't fit the definition of what a public way like that entails. So as a Class 5 road, we really have to open it up. They did give us an option to, if we wanted at some point to go to town meeting and petition town meeting, to have that become a municipal... They did give us an option to, if we wanted at some point to go to town meeting and petition town meeting to have that become a municipal trail, a class six, something along those lines that we could do that, but they put it in our court, whether or not we thought that that was something that would pass muster with the town at large. So it's a slightly different turn on the, uh, Swayze Parkway issue, but it was, it was a, an opinion.
Okay. Um, our August 31st agenda is kind of filling up, Mr. Dean, but maybe we could invite, um, and I can reach out to, um, Mr. Staples, uh, along with Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff. Maybe we could invite the trustees to one of our September meetings. And we can discuss this further. Any comments from the board?
I mean, I've been in favor of this since I was elected, so I'd be in favor of it still.
And Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff, did I hit all the high points from that site walk?
Yep, you did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, then we had several letters, um, that are in the packet regarding the mask mandate. Uh, there were several that were in favor. Uh, there were several that, um, were not in favor. Um, and again, those are in the packet. Um, we received, uh, Mr. Dean, a reminder that the, and I believe you already took care of this, but I'll have you, uh, comment. The, um, and I was actually going to ask Andy about this early on at seven o'clock, but the mail-in ballot request forms, have they, have they been corrected?
Um, I am not, I'll have to get you an answer on this, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. Um, I, I can check real quick to see if I have a response from the town clerk on that one. Uh, I may not though.
Okay, please do, because I, I was under the impression when we, when we last spoke that that was going to be taken care of.
Right.
So, um, yeah, let's get an answer tomorrow if we can, please.
Okay.
Uh, Selectwoman Gilman?
Um, yes, I, I had a, that, I had that concern also. I know there are people who are a little bit confused about um, whether it's an accurate document. Um, and if not, what do they have to do about it? So it's an important piece of information.
All right, Mr. Dean, and you'll get back to us tomorrow on that. Um, let's see, we received a notice from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services issuing an administrative order, um, regarding the drinking water. Mr. Dean, can you comment to this further?
Yes, we got that, uh, from the state to certify that we have complied with the TTHM, uh, compliance administrative order. That project was completed last year and they just got us the notice. So we're, we're in the clear on that.
Thank you.
Great effort by our public works team on that.
Last but not least, a notice from Xfinity regarding, um, a change in programming, uh, but also making the public aware that Comcast is continuing to make it easier for low income families to connect to the internet through a program they have called Internet Essentials. Additional information can be found at www]internetessentials.com. And this letter is in the packet for those that are interested in looking into that. And review of the calendar, we're going to meet again on August 31st, next Monday, uh, September 14th and September 28th. And with that, uh, I will throw it back to the board if there's any additional comments, uh, any of you have?
Do we want to revisit, um, Robin Tyner's comment about the August 10th meeting? Was she saying the minutes were inaccurate or that the data was incorrect? So I, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to it, but I know she mentioned that, um, something about, something that, um, Selectwoman Gilman had said about COVID numbers in Exeter. Do you recall that?
I, I recall her saying that, but obviously I haven't gone back and looked at, read all the minutes yet.
I think, I think what Rob was quibbling with was the accuracy of the statement, not that it was quoted inaccurately. So it would not be in our best interest to change what we said in the meeting.
Yeah, it stays. I mean, if that's what was said, that's in the minutes. Right? Okay, anybody else? Terrific. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening, uh, your patience through this, um, long hearing. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Yes.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.